This meeting is called to order. Good evening and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting. Today is Thursday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is now six oh six P. M. Before we proceed, I'd like to remind everyone that to ensure that all voices are heard and protected, the rules of decorum will be strictly enforced in accordance with our city's decorum ordinance in Florida statute eight seven one point zero one. Disruptive behaviors will receive a warning, and should disruptions persist, the Sergeant-at-Arms will be directed to take appropriate measures. If you are asked to leave the chambers, you will not be readmitted into the chambers. Order must be maintained at all times so the rights of all individuals individuals are protected, and we, the commission, may conduct the business of the city. I'm going to turn now to the city clerk if you could please begin the roll call.
Mayor Pennsara.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turkin.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Hay. Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, May Lee. We're going to move on now to our invocation. Our invocation for this evening will be led by Pastor Chuck Brannon of Gateway Community Church, and immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Thomas Turkin. Let's all stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, everybody, and God's peace, love, and joy to everybody present tonight. And thank you for inviting me to pray for our meeting this evening. I believe the best prayer is one based on scripture, and so I've chosen draw near to God, and he will draw near to you. Dear Father God, thank you so much for loving us and caring about us like you do, to the nth degree through your Son. Lord, I thank you for Boynton Beach, a great place to live. I love our city and our people, and I pray your blessing on our commission, our mayor, and all those who serve so well in Boynton Beach under difficult circumstances many times. Lord, I pray for our citizens, every man, woman, boy, and girl in Boynton Beach. May we each do our very best to have the best city possible. So, Lord, tonight, I pray that each one of us will draw near to you so we can understand our faith and be strong in it and live a godly life where there's peace on the street and in the neighborhoods and in every part of our life. Father, may we draw near to you so we can overcome the problems we face, the pains, the hurts, the suffering, setbacks, the downfalls, give us strength in our life every single day. Father, help us to draw near to you so we can defeat our temptations that are all around us. Lord, help us to get close, to draw near, so we can love our families, our wives, our husbands, our children, and nurture them in their faith and be an example to them in morality, love, caring, and walking as a godly man or a woman. And, Lord, I pray also that you'll help us to draw close to you so we can be the best citizen we can be, make our city special, to overcome problems, to meet potential, and to live a good life here in this place. So, Lord, we thank you for loving us. You've drawn close to us through your Son. Help us each and every one to draw close to you. And may tonight's meeting and all that's accomplished be for the benefit of the people and the blessing upon the people for Boynton Beach to be the best it can be. And I pray this in the mighty name of Christ. Amen. The face of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Pastor Brannon. We appreciate you, and thank you for being here. We're going to move on now to agenda approval, additions, deletions, and corrections to the agenda. I received a request from staff to move up item. Give me one moment to double check. It is item ten B. And let's have that if there are no objections to after public audience. Are there any objections from my colleagues to move item ten B right after public audience and before administrative? All right, let's go around the dais if there's anything else. And I'm going to turn to my right, Commissioner Cruz. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Only one item, Mayor. I'd like to move item five A administrative to be the first item. I know there might be people here that came for that purpose. So in case we have lengthy discussions, it might be something that we could do to expedite the process.
Commissioner, where would you like to move it to?
Before, after openings, like after, two before other.
After other?
Before other.
Before other.
First item, just to get it out of the way, kind of like an announcement, and then just move on with the rest of the meeting.
I just spoke with council, and the concern is that because this is a final action in our community support funds, he wants, and I concur, that the option for public comment be given for this.
Understood, okay.
Is that all right, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Counsel, was that your intention? I just want to make sure I understood you correctly.
In addition to the fact that the public hearing on the budget and the millage has been set for a specific time, so.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Was there anything else, Commissioner Cruz?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Turkin.
I do not have anything.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hay.
I'm good.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly.
I do not have anything, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, so the only amendment so far is moving up ten B to after public audience, all right? May have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. So I heard a motion from Commissioner Kelly, and I heard a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously, and the agenda has so been amended. We're going to move on now to section two, informational items by members of the city commission, after which we'll proceed to the public hearing on the proposed millage as well as the budget. Let's begin on my left. If there's any informational items, Commissioner Kelly.
I do not have any informational items. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hay.
Yes, I did have the opportunity to attend the nine eleven memorial event here, and that was well done by staff. I commend them. And just ask for the blessings of all those families that were affected directly and all of us indirectly. God bless these United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor.
I did speak with Chris from AMP regarding eight A.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Cruz.
I also attended the nine one one remembering ceremony, and I had the chance to speak to several constituents regarding the utilities.
All right, thank you. As for myself, I just want to disclose that I have had extensive conversations with Chris Angelo pertaining to item eight A, and I look forward to having that conversation when we get there to the agenda. All right, so that's it for me. We're going to begin now. This is to conduct the second public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four final millage and tentative annual operating budget. There are two resolutions. What I'd like to do is hear from staff, a quick overview of these two items, and we'll take public comments thereafter. We'll hear from the members of the commission, and then we'll do a vote for each of those resolutions one at a time. All right. Mara Frederiksen, thank you so much. Take us through the presentations.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Mara Frederiksen, Director of Financial Services. So this is the second reading for both the millage and the budget. The millage remains the same at seven point eight five mils, and the budget, the only change from the first reading to the second reading is the reduction of the commission salaries of one hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred.
All right, well, that was fast. I'm just so used to their lengthy presentations, but this is second, second go. Let's turn now to my colleagues if there's any questions or comments for Mara or even to our city management staff. Commissioner Kelly, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hay.
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
No, I don't have anything, Mayor.
All right, and Commissioner Cruz.
This would be including like the utility rates and everything.
That is included in the package, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, in that case.
We'll go around back in the dais. Yeah, no worries. Go ahead, Commissioner.
As I was looking through this, I, you know, I started asking a little bit more questions to staff regarding the potential changes in the utility rates. I know there's been a lot of misinformation saying that there's a thirty percent or twenty percent increase, which is not correct. However, as confirmed by staff, it appears that the change would be about a ten percent change, ten percent increase.
Correct, for the utility rate, yes.
Right. So that kind of got me thinking as to why, all of a sudden, we're increasing it so much. And I requested additional information, which was sent to my colleagues about twenty minutes prior to this meeting starting. I don't think that's really enough time to provide information to the elected officials of the city, and this is an issue that we've been seeing time and time again. Besides that, I, I do want to thank staff for providing the information. But I do have a lot of concerns. Some of those concerns include the percentage of the increase, which I believe is excessive, and it's unreasonable for our residents. And as per what we received from staff, maybe twenty, thirty minutes ago, I just wanted to see if we could pull that up for the public to see because I find it very strange that, you know, previous commissions have gotten a one or two percent increase, and this commission is given a ten percent increase to be approved. In a way, I do take that a little bit as a form of sabotage to the people on this dais, and I do not take that lightly. So if we can go ahead and look at the historical data to figure out what's been going on and why this commission is the one that receives the proposed ten percent increase and whose idea was that, why are we doing this? I do understand that the cost of living has significantly increased, but I do believe that there are ways that we can try to save dollars for our constituents that are currently struggling.
I can ask Punam Kalkat to come up and explain the rates for the utilities.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Commissioners. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and my colleagues, as well as everybody in the audience. My name is Punam Kalkat. I'm the Utilities Director. And Commissioner Cruz, I hear you loud and clear. I understand the concerns. The biggest reason why the rates are really being increased, the way we went about it, if you remember, last year, we did not bring any rate increases to the commission. The reason was we wanted to evaluate. We wanted to do an analysis of the rates. We wanted to analyze what our expenses were and what our operational needs were. And based on that rate analysis is why we've brought this change. And as we're looking at, we're not being able to meet our operational expenses at this point because of we are having to go back into our fund balance, and we are going to have to go back into our reserves and pull money out to balance the budget for the last two years at least. And if you look at the change that we are proposing, it's actually less than the inflation at this point. And if you look historically, inflation has been pretty flat for the last couple of years, and then two years back, it started really coming up. To give you an example as to what kind of changes are we seeing in our pricing, we just, actually, there's an agenda item on sodium hypochlorite, which is a chemical that's used for water treatment. And we, in the past, have spent around somewhere close to a little over two hundred thousand on that chemical per year. And this year, we went with a co-op bid, a competitive co-op bid, and the prices have come back six hundred thousand. So that's, that's the kind of expenses we are seeing, and we want to make sure that we are providing the community and our customers the best rate we can, the best services we can. The cost of living has increased. The personnel costs have gone up. All our CIP budgets and all our CIP projects are coming back. All the bids are coming back higher, sometimes double because of either supply chain issues and things are, for example, we have a project where we have ordered panels that were supposed to come in in October. Now they're going to come in in January. We don't even know whether they'll come in in January. So every project is costing us more. So those are all the reasons that we've had to increase. And if we don't increase the rates, we don't have any other way to really get the money to invest in our infrastructure. And if we don't invest in the infrastructure, so if you look at the asset value or life of our asset, you have to prolong that life in the, in the, in the ground. So if a pipe that usually you would replace in twenty years, if you have to go twenty-five years, you're taking that chance that it's going to be deteriorated more and more. And we are seeing that. We are at a point in our infrastructure, in our city, when pipes and everything else was laid out, that we are getting to the point where we will have to really invest into infrastructure. If you want to go out for bonds to try and not just have rate increases, but be able to get some bonding to pay for some of this, for that too, you need to have a good financial rating. Otherwise, you're not going to get a good rate to get that bond, or you might not even get banks to give you a bond. So, so those are all the reasons that we've looked at. And it's, it's, it's hard. It's not something that we like doing. A lot of our employees are also customers, so we take it very seriously. We've also looked at other utilities and other municipalities in the area as to what the rates are, and our rates are one of the lowest. And even when we increasing, when we are increasing, it'd be still probably third or fourth lowest. I've talked to other utilities, and almost everybody, because of inflation and because of infrastructure needs, is having to increase rates. So I'm not trying to copy anybody, but I'm just trying to give you context that this is something that's happening throughout the country, and it has nothing to do with this commission or any other commission. Really, it's the need. If these rates are not increased, we will, we will do whatever the policymakers tell us. We will do whatever you all vote on, and we'll work through that. But it's not going to be an easy fix. We might have to postpone projects. We might have to reduce services. We might have to figure out, we can't, we have to provide the water. We have to treat that much water. So if the cost of water treatment goes up, I might have to go to some other services and pick, pull that back. We are already looking at how can we make efficiencies. We are always looking at that, and we are making sure that we are being as efficient as possible. We're looking at overtime, but as our infrastructure ages, some of those callouts increase too. So those are all the problems we are facing right now. Those are, those are the reasons we're increasing the rates. But whatever the commission decides, we'll work with that.
Thank you, Punam. And, you know, again, I do understand to a certain point where things have increased in cost. I just think that ten percent is a really high number. Thank you for your time. Thank you very much. I do have another question going forward for the finance team. And as previously stated, I would like to show on the screen what the rate changes that were proposed or passed in the, in the near, in the last few years have been. I know that's in probably somebody's email, but I wanted to provide transparency for the public to see that.
Manny, can I ask you to pull my presentation? I have a presentation that I've done in the past, and there is, can we go to the next slide, please? The next slide? That's where the changes.
Thank you. So in two thousand and nineteen, it was a little over two percent. Two thousand and twenty, one point eight for water, less than one percent for wastewater. Two thousand and twenty-one, no changes. Two thousand and twenty-two wastewater was one point eight percent. And then two thousand and twenty-three, we're proposing a ten percent increase. So I do, you know, when these kinds of things happen, the first thing that people do is blame the commission. And of course, you know, we're the bad people and we're the ones trying to do this. But at the end of the day, this is what staff is recommending. And, you know, it's not something that I have advocated for, nor I would think that anybody here would advocate for. Quite the opposite. Now, moving on to the next, next thing I wanted to say is I wanted to discuss with the finance team within the last five years, and I did send that in an email before the meeting so you guys could be somewhat prepared. In the last five years, how much money have we sent from the Utilities Department back to the general fund?
It's roughly about eight million dollars a year.
I would like to go year by year.
Commissioner, can I say one more thing? Because you're seeing that the rates were not increased, if you don't keep up with CPI, it does catch up with you also. So that's another reason why we are having to make a higher change now because in the past, we haven't made the changes. But because inflation was low, we were able to manage it. It's becoming harder to manage.
Thank you so much.
So for fiscal year twenty-one, the water sewer transfer was seven point six three. For fiscal year twenty-two, it was seven point nine three, and currently this year, it is seven point nine three.
Okay, so what you're saying is, is that we're transferring about seven million dollars plus every year from the utility fund to the general fund?
Correct.
Okay. So if we look at it from, if we kind of zoom out of the perspective and we were to not send money out of the utility fund and keep those seven million dollars in the utility fund, in that case, we would not have to increase rate. Is that correct?
Essentially, but the cost of what those are is not a supplement to revenue to the general fund. So there are two transfers that come over from utilities to the general fund. One of those is an administrative or direct overhead transfer, and that's cost that's funding staff, personnel, all of the global services and whatnot. The other one is a percentage of revenue, which is essentially a franchise fee. It's something that comes over that any business operating on its own, such as FPNL or any other water service that was providing services within the city of Boynton would provide to the city. So that's why those revenues come over to the general fund. It's not a supplement to the general fund. It's a cost of doing business for the water fund.
Thank you for that information. So I understand the administrative one for personnel. How much is that, about four million, maybe?
Yeah, it's roughly about three point nine million.
Three point nine, okay. So about half of what we send to the general fund comes from administrative personnel cost. And then the remaining, about four plus million dollars, is a franchise fee that the city charges the Utilities Department to function the same way that do, we do with outside agencies such as FPNL. Correct. So if we, if we were to take that four million dollars in the future and we were to maybe not take, excuse me, not, not take the four million dollars out of the utility fund, maintaining that, you know, administrative personnel fee of four million and maybe not taking the other four million going forward, would that then allow for rates to not have to increase?
I couldn't speak to the utility side of it, but I would tell you that the general fund would then be looking for an increase in taxes or rates in other places to supplement that additional four million.
Yeah, I, I think that going forward, I would like to propose, I mean, at this point in this budget, we're kind of late in the process, and I know we have deadlines with the state. I do not agree with the ten percent. I've said it before, I'll say it again. But I would like staff to look into the possibility of not ever again sending the four million dollars from the utility fund to the general fund, which would provide a significant increase in revenue to the utility fund, which would provide money to where our residents would not be charged increased fees, which is something that's really important to me, and I would obviously think that that's important to everyone else here. So I don't know if my colleagues agree with that, and that's something that we can look into in future budget years. I understand we have deadlines with the state, and I understand that we're kind of, you know, far ahead in the process. But this is something that's, that's really important, and it's something that we should really focus on, and it's something that I think the residents would appreciate because we have to put the residents first. We have to understand that people are struggling right now, and increasing rates on people is not the right thing to do. So I, you know, strongly oppose that ten percent increase, and I want to make sure that going forward, if I can get the consensus from my colleagues, that we no longer charge our own city a franchise fee because we're not, I mean, we're the same thing. We are the city of Boynton Beach, and we are providing that service. So if we keep those four million dollars, you know, we can find efficiencies in the budget at another time and in other ways. I'm, there's, there's definitely efficiencies to be had. We just have to find, you know, smart ways to do so. And that's kind of what I wanted to say now. In addition to that, last thing I'm going to say, you know, I wanted to look into what a lower, because, I mean, we're saying clearly that if we don't do an increase, we're going to be in trouble in the utility side, and we have to provide water. And the cost of materials and labor and everything has significantly increased. So I would like to see what a six percent would look like instead of a ten percent because that ten percent is something that I really can't stomach, and it's something that I think it's way too much. And going forward, I would like to see the rates not increase by not sending those four million dollars out of the utility fund to the general fund, but rather keeping that in the utilities so that we don't have to increase fees anymore, hopefully. Again, we can't predict how high our prices are going to get, but as, as much as we can, we definitely want to control, tighten the belt and control expenses. So I wanted to look at the, at the six percent if possible.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Did that conclude your comments?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, so as we go around the dais, if we could address her request, I, I support looking into any efficiencies that we can find. And if she's interested in looking for what the rates would be at six percent, I'd be open to seeing those numbers as well. But I can't take a position of finality because we need to explore. I want to see what you all have to come back with and what the options are, okay? But Commissioner Cruz, I appreciate you because a lot of times it just requires some pushing to encourage people to look a little bit differently into the situation. All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Turkin.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Cruz, you definitely have my support on this. I've also received a lot of concern about the proposed utility rate adjustment. And I've mentioned before, there, you, you said something that I want to piggyback on, that there's other ways of identifying on how to produce these revenues, right? In a previous meeting, I had mentioned about operational necessities, infrastructure being one of them. There's a lot of assessments that we have here in the city that maybe aren't operationally necessary. And if the art assessment being one of them, just as an example, solely as an example, I think it's time to look at some form of infrastructure assessment, which is, you know, a proposed, you know, later agenda item because we keep hearing infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. You know, we are growing at a very rapid rate here in Boynton Beach, right? We're, we're seeing a lot of impact from the increased density. People know how I feel on that. I don't necessarily agree with that. You know, I think there's other ways to move forward. But when you have this increased density, something, something, something's got to give, right? And I've heard a lot of concerns about the quality of water that we do have, and yet we're sitting here increasing the rates. And I know Boynton historically has been awarded numerous times for the quality of water. And so I would like to also do some form of analysis or some form of study to identify what is the long-term impact of the increased density that we see with development and the quality of water that we have here in Boynton Beach. Because before I look at increasing, I want to make sure that, you know, not only is it a fair rate adjustment, it needs to be a quality adjustment because I, I can't stomach increasing a rate if our quality is going down. And that's suffering solely at the, you know, for the residents due to the approvals of continued projects. And so I don't think that, I, I don't think that the residents should have to pay for the impact of projects that have been approved, that have been spoken out against. You know, I think we need to really slow that down, and I think we need to take a look at infrastructure as a whole. And I know we've all talked about that at the budget meeting. You know, first year, I think we kind of identified that public safety was our priority, but I think we're, we're here with infrastructure, and it's not just looking at the current infrastructure we have now. It's looking at what's coming down the pipeline in terms of development and density, what can happen, you know, and being proactive. I always use the word proactive, proactive, and I just don't want to, I just, I don't want to just put that burden on the citizens. I think we have it internally to identify if we need to catch up with cost of goods or inflation or if there's other ways to, again, you know, create some form of assessment that could be focused on infrastructure. And so those are my comments in respect. And so th- those are my comments in respect to that. I don't, it's our job to find it internally. It's not our job to increase the taxes for the residents. And so I'm not in support of this taxes, tax increase for utilities as it lays before me. So Commissioner, you have my support.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm gonna turn now to Commissioner Hay.
Enough said. I've had all of my questions answered by staff. I would agree to, to take a look at this for future. But as far as for right now, I do support staff recommendation because they have answered all, all of my questions and I'm satisfied.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hay. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't realize we're gonna have such a, a, a conversation about this, but I'm happy to have it. You know, I, in looking at the numbers of, you know, I, we, and I can only guess because I wasn't on the dais at the time, but, you know, with COVID, I'm sure that was taken into consideration as to why rates weren't increased or, you know, at least to the same that it was historically. And so, you know, looking back now, we see that the city has suffered in, in doing that. And I, I also, I, you know, I agree ten percent is a lot. I think that it, we, we have to look at ways that we can gradually increase where we need to so that we're not largely affecting the residents. And so when you go from having the same rate for three years in a row to all of a sudden a ten percent increase, you know, it, it's, although it may look insignificant when you look at, you're talking about a dollar, dollar fifty, you know, per, you know, thousand, what is it?
gallons.
gallons of water. When you look at the global picture, it still affects the residents, you know, the resident, it still has an impact. So, you know, I, I, I want to be conscious of the fact that, you know, the reason that it wasn't increased was likely due to COVID and wanting to make sure that it wasn't impacting the residents. But now we see what that then cause is. Because I feel like it would have just been a gradual increase or it would have stayed the same for those years instead of, you know, there be, you know, maybe a little increase so that we weren't looking at a ten percent increase. So, you know, with that, I, I, I support Commissioner Cruz. I think that we need to look at what is, what can we get away, you know, what is the, what can we do to decrease that percentage and still provide services and still, and, and not decrease water quality and not decrease services? You know, we want to make sure that we're providing service, but we want to be responsible about that. And I don't know, Mara, maybe you can answer it. Where does that, the difference come from? Is that just a made up number of what the utility fund sends back to general over and above administrative?
The percentage of revenue?
Yeah. Is that just, is that a number, a percentage that the city and utilities came up with somewhere down the line? Or is that something that's governed by state law? What governs that?
Right. So typically it can't exceed eight percent to keep our bond rating at, at least a double A or triple A rating. So we don't ever exceed the eight percent. We are at eight percent right now for that transfer currently. And it's eight percent of the revenues.
Right. So we're at the, we're, utilities is maxing out on what they can give to the city. So, I mean, I support Commissioner Cruz in trying to figure out next year how we can bridge that gap so that the residents are, are not on a yearly basis seeing significant increases because that's not, that's not gonna happen. We have to figure out how we can make this work. We, you know, just like inflation is affecting the city, it's affecting the residents. So we have, we, you know, we, that's one thing, you know, walking around and, and talking to the residents that I heard, you know, what are, what are you doing about taxes? What are you doing about fees? What are you doing about assessments? And we really have to, you know, tighten the belt, make sure that we're doing what we, you know, what we can for the residents. So, so I don't know, Mayor, I don't know how we proceed, you know, we're at a.
Well, Commissioner, my understanding is, one, they're gonna do some research on the six percent. I didn't hear any objections about that. But these possible changes that they're going to explore, I heard from most of you was about for the upcoming fiscal year, the next cycle. That was my understanding. That was not your intention, Commissioner? Let's go ahead. Let's get some clarification, Commissioner. Go ahead.
I, you know, I do not support a ten percent increase this year. I think it's too much. And, you know, I had many conversations with, with the city manager yesterday about this and, in the past. And, you know, we talk and try to figure things out and try to brainstorm of how we can potentially not have such a significant increase. But to clarify, the six percent will be for now because I do not want to do a ten percent increase this year. I, there, you know, there was an email thread going around about my questions and I, I asked them yesterday. I know it's short notice and, and all that, but I wanted to see if maybe we could have a little bit of, of discussion of what that would look like and/or what opportunities that could bring or what, you know, what effects that would bring with a six percent versus a ten percent for us to really understand so that the board can understand and we can look into that and then go from there.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor Turkin.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't support the ten percent increase for this, this budget period. I'm, I'm willing to allow staff to research, look at this, and I'll come back in for a special commission meeting to vote on this. Because, you know, we're representing eighty thousand people and this is a large, you know, this is a large item. And I, I don't want to rush through this. And so for me, I'm willing to come back, serve my community and allow staff to come back with something. But I'm not, I'm not willing to vote yes on ten percent for a, for a tax increase like this. I can't do it.
All right. So I want, I have a question for our city manager and/or council. I know we have a state deadline. What are our options in terms of this deadline? And is it something that staff could come back within, within that timeframe?
So I actually spoke with our city attorney this morning regarding this. We did get an idea as to what number you were looking for is six percent. It's roughly about a two point four million dollar reduction to the utility fund and the transfer is a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to the general fund. So that being said, if the commission decides that they would like to move forward with the six percent versus the ten percent, the dais can make that decision tonight, make an amendment to the budget and ask us to go back and either utilize fund balance or cut expenses. But my recommendation would be the utilization of fund balance for this year.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, David Tulsa's interim city attorney, but the, the utility rates were previously approved.
The utility rates were previously approved, so we would have to bring back the rate resolution at the next meeting. But you could amend the budget and approve the budget with the amendment tonight.
So currently the budget is taking into account the fact that you've approved a ten percent increase. But it, through your approval of the budget process, if you want to reduce the budget by that amount that the finance director indicated, you can do that with the recognition that you're gonna have to bring back an amendment to the utility rate resolution to reduce the rate increase from ten percent back to six percent. And, and one other point that I'll just thought of, I need to look to see if it would require an additional notice in the utility bill if we're gonna be changing the rates. So we'd have to provide enough time under the statute to provide the notice for the change. And then bring that back to you. I think that would probably have to be.
Probably the first meeting in October.
Yeah.
So my recommendation is that we come back for a special meeting because for me personally, I don't want to make a decision on six percent now without seeing more information and seeing what the implications are because this may affect other things. So I just want to make sure I give staff enough time to actually, you know, research whatever they need to research and making sure that we're making a responsible decision. If it's possible, I'm gonna support the six percent. But I just want to make sure that there's sufficient time for you to go ahead and do your work. So I'm comfortable, I'm speaking to my colleagues now, I'm comfortable coming in for a special meeting to address this. But let's hear from everybody else because I know I've heard a second round from both of you, but I've not heard from Commissioner Hay and Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Hay, any thoughts?
I'm satisfied with, with the way it is, but I, I do see which way it's going and I guess I'll go with the majority. But come back, take a look at the six percent. But you, I understand what staff are saying. These days and times, you can't have the best for nothing. I feel that they've done the research, they're the experts, and the questions that I've asked and answered. There was one point which, a few years back, we, we had the best water in the county to the, to the point that we could, we could put a labor on the bottle and sell our water here from Boynton. And nothing has changed from that. But in order to maintain that, we have to make the investment. So I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with the way it's been presented with the ten percent. However, I will go along with the majority and take a look at the six percent and how the numbers pan out.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly, any further thoughts?
No, what, what is the deadline that we, when, when do we have to have this special meeting because it's.
Has to be before October first.
Right.
If I might, in addition, so you have two items on your agenda tonight. You have the millage rate that you have to approve, and then you have the budget, which you approve after the millage rate. Right? In addition, if you're gonna recess this hearing regarding the millage and the budget, there's an additional advertisement that you have to place in the paper regarding the fact that the meeting's been recessed. Or the hearing, the public hearing regarding the but, millage and budget have been recessed. That advertisement has to run no, no less than two, no more than five days prior to the meeting date if you're gonna set a special meeting date. So I just want to put that all on the table now so you understand what you're dealing with. So you could approve the millage rate tonight if you want and then, you know, have a public hearing on that tonight. And then you could recess and bring the budget back at that second meeting if that's what you want.
All right, Commissioner Kelly, I just want to make sure you, you had an opportunity to finish your thoughts.
Yeah, I just, my concerns are, are timing. I mean, I just, I don't, with knowing what is going on in the next week and a half, I don't, I don't, or I just, I have concerns with when we would be able to conduct a special meeting, but I'm open to, you know, figuring that out. I mean, I just, I don't know how we're going to squeeze that in.
I feel like that is an administrative question and we can get any of our staff to look into that, to give us some options.
Do we have to have this done before October first?
Yes.
Yes.
And with all the travel, as Commissioner Kelly just stated, I, I think we have a, a challenge here. So we need to discuss that and come up with some dates and how are we gonna handle this? Because Saturday, the twelfth, sixteenth to the twentieth, some of us will be in Texas and then we come back. It's gonna be another, well, anyway, what, what were you gonna say?
I just need to check that we do need to let our customers know there's a, it doesn't say that you have to give thirty days, but usually we like to give thirty days to people to know what the rates are going to be. So that's usually how we go about it.
Even if it's a decrease, Punam?
Any rate, any rate, whatever the rate is, if there's any change.
All right. All right. Was there anything else, Commissioner Hay? No, okay. Vice Mayor.
We have, we have two weeks. I think we can get this done. I think staff can look at this maybe in a week or so. And I think a lot of residents would be a lot happier to get a notice that their utilities are not gonna increase on, to ten percent versus six percent. I know for me as a resident, I'd be a lot happier. So I don't, I don't think the notice, as long as it doesn't break any laws, I don't think personally that's gonna be a big pushback from the community. The other thing I, I want to ask is what, what other municipalities do we have contracts with for our water?
The only, the only thing that usually you have is an emergency interconnect. If you're in an emergency that you can buy water from, and those rates are usually much higher. We usually have it with Palm Beach County. We have it with Delray and Lantana. But usually we have only used Palm Beach counties when we have had to do any work at the plant and we don't have enough production.
Okay, so, but we, so we don't service any other municipalities?
Oh, we are servicing, we service Ocean Ridge, town of Hypaloxa
Okay.
and unincorporated Palm Beach County.
Okay. So, you know, I, I think if there's gonna be a tax burden that's significant, it should be on those municipalities to also help offset the residents of Boynton Beach. And I, and, and again, I don't, you know, I know we want to keep the contracts, right? We don't want to lose out on the contracts. But, you know, I think that's something that we can look at too within this period.
I, I'm, and correct me if I'm wrong, Punam, the, by state statute, we can't charge over twenty-five percent to those extenuating.
Already charging that.
So they're capped.
We're already maxed out. We're capped out on what we can do there. The other thing I want to bring up is the six percent we can work with. But I want this commission to understand that if you stop the four million dollar transfer into the general fund, that means that we're going to definitely see services affected. So there is going to be, that represents close to four percent reduction to your general fund, which already takes eighty percent to public safety entities. And with the additions that the commission has made over the last two years, six additional police officers, twenty-one additional firefighters, those are the type of increases that we're going to experience over the next couple of years, which public safety was a priority. I don't know, me being city manager, any city manager for that, for that matter, is gonna be able to maintain services when there's a four million dollar cut. So.
Vice Mayor, were you?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we have a fire assessment that was supposed to sunset respectfully, right? That was never sunsetted, which is supposed to assist that, that portion of the general fund. You know, I know there's a study for a public safety impact fee that'll put a burden on developers instead of residents. So again, it's our job to find internally how to offset these, these revenues and these expenditures. And I don't think we need to go to taxing the community first. I think we need to be creative and that needs to be a last case scenario. So respectfully, I'm, I'm gonna stick with the six percent. As far as transferring funds, you know, I'm open to looking at that and seeing what that looks like in this time. You know, if we decide to come back and have a special meeting, but I will not support a ten percent increase at this point in time.
All right. Anything else? So it sounds like we have consensus. We're gonna have to come back again. And we're gonna hear from our staff and what our options are on possible meeting dates. We have notice requirements. We have deadlines to meet. It sounds like I didn't hear any objections from staff, so it is indeed possible to make it happen. All right? So I look forward to seeing those updated numbers. Commissioner Hay, go ahead.
Let me be clear on this. Are we talking about approving the budget without this line item being satisfied? How do we know what the bottom number is? I, I understand we can approve the millage rate, seven point eight five, which I'm all for, no problem. But when it comes to the budget, are we holding up the entire budget on this item? Or we can pull that item, line item out and vote on the rest of it? I guess that's the legal.
We, I was, I was just confirming with respect to recess in the hearing, but you can vote on the millage rate tonight if you like. They're two separate items. And then if you want to recess the budget hearing, you can recess the budget hearing separately.
So to be clear, we're not, you know, if this is the direction, we're not gonna vote, we're not gonna extract one item out of the budget and vote on the rest. We're just gonna recess this hearing for the budget and come back to it. And then we'll vote to all together all at once when we come back. Is that correct? Counsel?
If that's what your intention is, yes.
All right.
Looking at the calendar, we have September twenty-sixth, which is a Tuesday. I don't know if that, that's after the conference. I don't know. That's something that.
And you can have the hearing that night. I checked because that's the night that the county commission is having their second budget hearing. And you can have the hearing that night, I checked, because that's the night that the county commission is having their second budget hearing. And you can have your meeting on the same night as either the school board or the county commission's budget hearings.
Okay, well, I would rather just let staff figure it out and come back to us, and I don't want to have a long conversation.
I think we already might have a workshop for strategic planning on the 27th at 6 o'clock. Or at least that was potentially what was going to happen. Is that still the case?
I, I think the Dina is still working on finalizing it with with the consultant because his availability is kind of limited. But I, I, so I don't know, but I can find out.
Good try, okay.
And honestly, this, this takes priority, so if we need to postpone that, that's okay.
Okay, so maybe if everyone can, on the 27th, maybe that's an opportunity. But, you know, I I know it's kind of, it's challenging to maybe have another meeting, but I think that this justifies it, and it's important. We're here to try to help the residents. That's why we're putting these chairs. And I think that, you know, the more effort we can do, not only now, but planning in the future, to try to not have increases in utilities, I think that it's worth all the time in the world. So I'm fine with that. Thank you.
All right, so counsel, I believe, is it the motion to recess this hearing? Is that the appropriate motion?
Yes, we're not adjourning. It would be a motion to recess both the milage and budget hearings.
Are they approving the milage? Could we move forward with approving the milage?
Yeah, that's, you said both, mine, so I must have misunderstood. So, yeah, you can move forward with the milage, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's all right, no worries. So my intention was just move, recessing for
The budget.
The budget.
Okay.
But the milage we can address today. I didn't hear any concerns about that.
So because the milage has to be approved before the budget, what you should do is have your milage hearing now.
Okay.
Allow for public comment on the milage, then vote on the milage, then recess the budget.
Okay, all right. Was there anything else from staff when it pertains to the actual milage? I think that was it, right? So let's go ahead, let's proceed with public comment. We're going to hear public comments specifically for the milage rate. If it's not about the milage rate, wrong time. After all those.
Same, the same.
And yes, there is no change in the milage rate. And after which we'll entertain those public comments online. If you're online, keep your digital hands raised. We will take the last digital hands raised up until the very last person in the chamber has spoken. All right, if you'd like to speak specifically on the milage rate, now is a time to approach the podium.
Hi, I'm Jackie, you guys know me. So the milage rate is to raise our bills on our city taxes, is that what you're talking about?
This is not a Q and A, ma'am.
Well, we want to understand what you mean. You want to raise the milage rate so you can raise our taxes, which you already raised our taxes. You raised it significantly. The tax bills that came out went up tremendously. I mean, I didn't bring mine because I didn't know we were talking about that. I brought this that just arrived two days ago. So I just found out about this. So I I disagree, I do not comply with raising the milage rate. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to provide some clarification, there is no change to the milage rate. We, that's the only thing we can control. There is no change to the milage rate. All right, so this is time for public comment. Can we have all the public comment, then we can address it all at once? Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to speak specifically on the milage rate? Okay, I'm going to ask IT, is there anybody online with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
With that, public comment on the milage rate is closed. So let's address now, I see that members of the commission would like to speak. Go ahead, Commissioner Cruz.
Yes, Mayor, just, just for the record, we decreased the milage rate, which is the property tax rate last year. It's one of the biggest increases we've seen in many, many years. And this year, we're keeping it the same, so there is no increase. What has increased is the value of homes, which if you put the percentage, it's possible that people could have seen either a small decrease or maybe the same, or, you know, it just depends on the property value. If your, if your home, if your home, if your home is on a homestead exemption and your property taxes only go up, I think it's to 3%, then in that case, you would not have seen an increase. And that's for people who have their primary residence within the city of Boynton Beach. But again, we did decrease taxes last year. We decreased the milage rate by an amount that's the highest amount that's been done in several years. And we are not raising taxes. We're keeping the rate the same this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, I saw your hand up.
I think Commissioner Cruz hit it on the head, and the city commission of the city of Boynton Beach does not control the market. So if property values inflate or deflate, you know, it's, that's market driven, right? We just set the milage rate. And again, like Commissioner Cruz said, it was decreased last year and stayed the same this year, along with the fire assessment. There has not been an increase in that the last two years.
All right, thank you. Anything else from my colleagues? With that, I'll entertain a motion. This is proposed resolution number R 23 dash 119. Again, this is to maintain the milage rate, there is no change. We have a motion from Commissioner Cruz, I heard the second from Commissioner Hay. I'm going to ask the city clerk if you could please begin the roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call, vote, the motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Before we continue to the next item on the agenda, I do have a comment regarding the budget. I know we've moved on from that and staff has sat down, but I just want to pose these questions and some comments. There's no need to come to the podium. Is there a long term plan to adjust accordingly with increases in CPI? And is there a mechanism to smooth out those increases? And then we can discuss that further, but I just want to pose that question. So this way, we're not adjusting yearly, but rather it's part of a broader plan. So I'm always in favor of a long term financial plan whenever possible. The second item I want to address is, I'm actually glad that this budget is being delayed. And the reason for this, and I'll keep my comments relatively brief. I have asked from our staff with all members of the management team a copy of all contracts in the city. That has been over two months ago. I have just received the end of that just a few days ago. It is over two months. And one of the revelations of my request is that it turned out we did not have a contract management system. People were literally scrambling to find these contracts. Why it took two months, that's another topic. That this is not the fault of the current administration. But it showed us that this is how we've been operating in the stone ages for so long. This is unacceptable. And my request to staff now is, if at all possible, and if there is support from my colleagues, if we can include in the budget, again, if possible this year, allocation for a contract management system, I want to make sure that this problem does not persist. And here's the issue for me. If something takes two months long, I understand. I'm concerned about when staff begins to work on my request. I'm not unreasonable. I'm willing to work with people and be patient. But there is a deadline for the budget. And now I am put in a position of voting yes or no without having all the information I need to make a determination. So again, I know our staff is doing their best. But I just want to share with the public and with my colleagues in a, in a unusual way. It is fortuitous that this is being delayed. This will actually give me time to review those contracts. I am just making sure that I am doing my job and doing my job thoroughly. We oversight all the finances in the city as well, the budget, right? So I'll leave my comments there, and if it is something possible, city manager, a contract management system would be ideal. All right, this year, if possible.
Yeah, no, Mayor, that's, that's a great point. I know a lot of these things, obviously, they're not discovered until they're discovered because we have to be asked. And if these issues, especially when I came in, I know City Hall, for all intents and purposes, a lot of the technology that we have was antiquated, and it was almost like it was based in the 90s. I've had this discussion with Assistant Manager Mattos, Deputy Manager Andrew Mack, contract management system, disciplinary system. We need, obviously, we've got an investigation system where we're, we're going to be centrally housing things. It it's just, as they come, as they're brought to my attention, that's the only way we can actually address them, one, one at a time, one at a time. But the contract manager, obviously, the administrative contracts were the things that were being housed in departments separately. And we have 16, 16, 17 different departments in the city. So reaching out to 16 different division directors, managers, things of that nature, to try to gather these contracts is really kind of what threw, threw everything off track. So having systems like that, I know, they were, when I came here, we were still doing paper time sheets in those since the early 2000s. And anybody who knows paper time sheets, they, they are a recipe for impropriety. So that's the whole reason why we switched over to an electronic time sheet system, which is Kronos. I know our innovation technology director, Fred Harris, he's been amazing. He's, he's moving us along. We had cybersecurity issues, $384,000 we added to the budget to kind of protect adding those different tranches of security. So it's definitely something that's on our radar now. I thank you for bringing it to our attention. But going forward with the commission's request, sometimes these things, and we have to address them as they come. And I apologize for the 60 day delay.
So thank you for that. You know, we, we have to fix problems when we see them, and and we're taking the steps to do that. It is just alarming for, it it really is. Anyone know what was right or not right? If we were getting terrible deals or good deals or whatnot, if they need to be updated, if we're not keeping track of things. And you know what? Because we're not keeping track of things, I can't even think of all the questions that we may even ask about it. So listen, it's a mistake, but we're moving forward, and that is the important thing. All right, so that is the work of this commission is to take us out of the stone ages. Vice Mayor, was that your hand up? Was that you? No, all right. Oh, that was you, go. All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for, for bringing it up, and and thank you for your dedication to the city. I know that you might not get a lot of credit sometimes, but you really, really work really hard. And I, and I commend you for that, I respect you for that. Wanted to say that, you know, I know this year's budget might be tight. And now, after my request of, you know, decreasing the recent rates, we might be even tighter. So I I do want to tell you, I do support getting a contract management system. I don't know if we're going to be able to afford it this year. However, there are different ways, I mean, if the money's there, I 100% support that. However, in the meantime, we could maybe look into each department having, let's say, I don't want to get, continue to get antiquated, but even having an Excel sheet with all the contracts, all the dates and the links to the PDFs of the contracts could be a way that we could start having that data, you know, readily available if we were to not have the funding for a contract management system. But if the money's there, I I do support it.
Exactly, this is the, the request is to look into it if it's possible, if we can make it in, let's try to make it in.
Thank you.
All right, is there anything else for my colleagues? Commissioner Kelly?
No, I just, Mayor, just, I wanted to support you in this. I think it's important that, you know, we shouldn't, you shouldn't have to wait months to get this information. And I am sure, I am confident that city staff will be able to figure out how to make it work. I don't think this is something that we put off in the hope of maybe putting it in another budget somewhere down the line. Because it's important that when a contract is coming up or there's an issue with a contract, or if you just have a question on a contract, that it doesn't take you too much to get said contract, and that you should have answers when you need them. And so I, you know, thank you for, for bringing this up and bringing it to everyone's attention. And I think it needs to be a priority. We may have a computer system that already could integrate with this type of software. We, we don't know. And so, but I, those are, I support you in this, and I, I want to see it, it done sooner rather than later.
Thank you, everybody. I see our Director of Finance is at the podium. Mara, did you want to add anything?
I did, so one of them, your first point, you mentioned long term plan to adjust. Are you just looking at utility rates or you're looking at?
I meant that broadly.
Broadly, okay, so.
And I can show you some examples from other cities, you know. We can have that conversation later.
And then as far as the contract management, purchasing does have a contract management plan already budgeted for. They are only tracking items that are over the threshold of the 50,000, which is the commission approval. And we did recently just implement an integration into our system so that our purchase orders now track the spend in that system. So we can certainly look at expanding that as an opportunity to look at some of those other contracts as well.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our comments. If there's nothing else, we're going to move on to item 3A, presentate, I'm sorry.
You're, you need to recess that portion of the budget.
Motion to recess.
The budget hearing.
The budget hearing, yes, thank you for that.
All right, we have a motion to recess. Is there a second?
Second.
A second, the, the motion came from Vice Mayor, a second came from Commissioner Cruz. All those in favor of the motion to recess, the budget hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to item 3A, presentation and discussion, artificial reef. This was previously tabled from September 5th, 2023. With that, may I ask for a motion to remove from the table?
So move.
We have a motion to remove from the table from the Vice Mayor. Is there a second? The second came from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of removing this item from the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, this item is, has been removed from the table. Let's hear from staff. Deputy City Manager, we're working with somebody to get that ready. Okay, did we have a backup plan? Okay, great.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Punam Kalka, Director of Alana's here. She's going to talk to you about Artificial Reef Project.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, Alana Irwin, Sustainability and Resiliency Administrator for the city of Boynton Beach. So today I'm going to be talking about artificial reefs and just what some of the findings were. This was an ask from the commission to just see if it was feasible to do an artificial reef or if there were other alternatives available. Next slide, please. So artificial reefs are manmade structures that enhance and promote aquatic life and marine life and ecosystems. They are made of allowable materials that do not harm the environment. They're typically limestone or rock or concrete or heavy gauge steel. An example would be like a sunken vessel, like a sunken marine ship or navy ship or something like that that is used to promote aquatic life habitat restoration. So the materials are determined by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. So they wouldn't allow any materials that could harm the environment, and you would have to get special approvals and permits prior to installing a reef. Next slide, please. So some of the benefits of artificial reefs, they, first and foremost, they enhance recreational and diving opportunities. So many divers and scuba divers, deep sea divers, deep sea fishers, et cetera. They are very interested in exploring artificial reefs because of the enhancements to the ecosystem. So it is a very big ecotourism activity that could be beneficial. They also provide social, socioeconomic benefits to the coastal communities. By, what happens is, is they reduce the intensity of waves that are breaking in the shore. So it helps reduce things like shoreline erosion. It helps reduce the influx of storm surge or flooding that may occur along our beaches. So those are some of the benefits of artificial reefs that will help make sure that we're not losing our precious shoreline and our beaches that we do love. They can also be used as, they have these things called mitigation reefs that can be used to prevent, that can prevent.
One second, whoever phoned that is, could you please put that in silent? If you need to take your call, you can take it outside. All right. Ma'am, if you could take that outside? All right. Thank you, please continue.
Okay, so there is a type of reef called a mitigation reef that that is used as sort of like an intermediary to help prevent um loss of sand from things like dredging or coastline rehabilitation where they take sand from the deep waters of the ocean and put it on the shoreline. So those are some other um benefits as well. And they help promote uh fish habitat, they help promote biodiversity, and they help for, um, provide oyster reefs. So um oysters are very critical, um, they're very critical uh habitat for uh water quality and water pollution. So it's very important that we are preserving these ecosystems. Next slide, please. So reefs, um, some of the benefits that of, that I just discussed overlap with how we would mitigate climate change um and some of the impacts of impending potential sea level rise um as a result of changing temperatures globally. So um obvious, the obvious ones are the reduction of erosion of the shoreline. And um it would reduce again the wave impacts during a storm, storm surge. It, it reduces the intensity of, of those waves that would be coming along shore and eroding our beaches. And um like, like the regular benefits, it has the uh increased biodiversity and it provides habitat protection for aquatic life. Um, it also decreases the velocity and force of waves and it promotes ecotourism through diving. So a lot of the same benefits that you would see just regularly. They also have benefits for the long term as well for climate change or um new sea level rise. Next slide, please. So some of the additional benefits that come from, from this is it would uh elim, it would eliminate the um, sorry, um, it would um, sorry. It um, it generates a lot of revenue as far as ecotourism. We are talking about budget and finding ways to increase the profitability of the city. So one way would be uh ecotourism. So um the, Palm Beach County has installed a natural and artificial, they've enhanced their natural reefs and they've installed artificial reefs along several areas of their coastline. And it's uh generated roughly two hundred and eighty million dollars and three thousand jobs. So artificial reefs have the ability to create jobs as well as provide revenue for the city. Next slide, please. So um I, I put together some slides that are going to highlight some of the existing reefs. I want to note that these reefs are not currently owned by the city. They are owned by the county. So just some reefs that are actually offshore, uh, right near the um Oceanfront Park. Next slide, please. So as you can see here, there are several uh reefs that are located here that are various depths. Um, the, the colors represent the materials that they are made. So the gray ones are made of limestone boulders or, you know, concrete. So they're made of more natural materials. And the yellow ones are actually made with ships. So they were actually sunken vessels that, um, that were used for the purposes of enhancing the aquatic um habitat there. So um the two in yellow, like I said, were sunken vessels. Um, the, the, those are the deeper reefs, uh, such as the uh Boynton Kiwanis Miller Light Reef. It's, I believe, about a two hundred and, or a, yeah, two hundred and sixty-nine foot. It's a pretty deep, pretty deep reef compared to some of the others. And it's not, the deeper you go and the more material you use, obviously the more expensive that a reef would be. So those are some things we would have to consider for the feasibility of, of, of an artificial reef project. Next slide, please. So these are just some examples of some of the reef projects that have been completed uh in, in our area. The most common one that probably most people know about is Red Reef Park off the coast of um Boca Raton. Uh, that was completed in September of twenty twenty-one. And it enhanced the park's reef into an extended snorkeling trail for beachgoers. So this reef is actually a very shallow reef relative to some of the other ones that we have off the shore of Boynton Beach, but it still has um generated lots of revenue for the city. Um, I don't have that exact figure, but it has been a revenue generator for, for the city. And the total project cost was around six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. A couple of their reefs that were, um, that were very successful was Wahoo Bay in Pompano Beach and um Sea Hive in South Florida. So reef projects are critical here. Um, I attended a training um with the Southeast District and they did a presentation on coral reef habitat restoration. And one of the glaring problems that we're having with our existing natural reefs is they're becoming ill and they're dying off because of these illnesses that they don't know the origins of. So it's really important to help promote our environment with some maybe artificials. It's not as dangerous, but still has the same effect that maybe it will allow corals to grow. Next slides, please. So these are just examples of some potential grant opportunities. Um, depending on the size of the reef, I believe the average cost right now due to changes in inflation are about, is about one point two million dollars. So it is a little expensive to install an artificial reef, but there are grant funding opportunities such as Florida Fish and Wildlife and the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration or NOAA. Um, those are some of the most common ones. Sea Grant also has some funding opportunities. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection might have some. And then there are some private companies that do also offer grants for artificial reef installation. So there is funding opportunity out there for um the enhancement of the aquatic ecosystem. Next slide, please. So the future direction, um, the city of Boynton Beach, uh, there is the feasibility to install an artificial reef um offshore. We're just outside of the funding cycle right now. So we would have to explore grant opportunities this coming year to, to get an actual cost estimate and see if we can get, procure some funding for that. But in the meantime, to uh help us with our flood mitigation, because that's a, a glaring issue along our coastline through our um climate change vulnerability assessment that was conducted in twenty twenty-one, is we have a significant flooding issue in our intracoastal areas. So uh we're, we've uh, we're looking to partner with Reach Our Reef Arches LLC. Um, also um subsidiary of Hedrick Brothers Construction that uh would be installing what they call a living shoreline. So a living shoreline is, has the same, if not more, benefits as an artificial reef because they not only uh allow for habitat and ecotourism, but they are also protecting the shoreline, the city's critical assets, and um they're a lot cheaper to install. Uh, so, so an artificial or um a living shoreline, and the reef arch structure would um, it, it's shaped as it looks like an arch and it has these modules inside that, there are these holes that allow the mangroves. So it would be in an intracoastal habitat that allows mangroves to flourish and will promote habitat restoration through that. Because a lot of our mangroves along the intracoastal waterway right now are experiencing damage from wave activity and shoreline erosion and so on and so forth. So we need to find a way to mitigate the flooding in those areas in the, in the current state because we're having significant flooding issues. So we've proposed locations at uh J C Park, Mangrove Park and Intracoastal Park. And it would be a partnership, uh, very similar to some other projects that are going on right now with Intracoastal Park. And the estimated cost right now is about eight hundred and twenty-four thousand with um the, the opportunity for funding through the Florida Department of Environmental Protection's Resilient Florida Program. Uh, that is a flood mitigation project first and foremost. So it would protect those assets from flooding. It could also protect nearby residents that may experience flooding by those parks as well because it'll allow the mangrove ecosystem to flourish and therefore prevent flooding from inundating as far inland. And if there is projections and sea level rise even as much as half of an inch, that inundation from storm surge, king tide or rainfall events will extend further inland. So now is the time to start um enhancing our shoreline, enhancing our intracoastal waterways and preventing the flooding. So um, these are just some of the future proposed plans for the project and direction while we're looking into the cost and grant opportunities for an artificial reef uh moving forward. And living shorelines, I just want to add that they, um, there have been successful living shoreline projects uh in several counties, Miami Dade County, Pinellas County and Sarasota County in particular. And the Florida Department of Environmental Protection is an advocate for living shorelines and they will award funding for living shorelines as part of flood mitigation because it's a green infrastructure, which is really important for coastal vulnerability. Uh, last year, um, over the last two years, FTEP has awarded nineteen total living shoreline projects. So every living shoreline project that was submitted has been awarded as part of this Resilient Florida Program, which combines about fifteen million dollars in, in grant funding for these projects. So um, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you for that excellent presentation. Uh, this sounds very intriguing. Uh, I see, I heard a little applause back there. Thank you. Uh, let's turn now to the commission for questions and comments. Let's begin to my left this time, Commissioner Kelly, and we'll go around.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is Vice Mayor's um item that he mentioned. So thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing this up and, and bringing this idea forward. And city staff, thank you for, for this presentation. I think that this, um, you know, with the, all the funding that's available and the grant funding that's available, I think it's a, it's a win for, for everyone. And i- if it doesn't, you know, if we're able to do it without, um, you know, and, and protect our, our shorelines and provide, um, you know, housing for creatures, for sea creatures. I think it's a win. So I am, I am all for us pursuing and moving forward with um, with grant applications and seeing how we can get this, uh, get this going. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, hey.
I think this is a, an excellent program. Uh, just, are there a, a rule or formula as to how close they can be? You know, these artificial reef, not, not the natural ones?
So the artificial reefs, I don't know the exact specifications, but you don't want them so close to the shoreline because it would affect beachgoers and it would affect the actual natural habitat. Most of the reefs are deep enough to where you could scuba dive or snorkel. So I'd say at least ten feet is usually the, the shallowest that they should go. But there are some reefs that have gone as deep as two or three hundred feet. Um, the, some of the reefs that are off the coast, some of the deeper reefs are at about sixty-nine to seventy-five feet below the surface, and then some of the shallower ones are within ten to fifteen feet.
Very good. I do want to thank the uh Vice Mayor for bringing this up. Uh, it's an excellent idea. Uh, we need that. Um, is there an impact from the um, the Army Corps of Engineer?
So for artificial reefs, we would need to get permitting for them. And that permit cycle, I believe, takes about eighteen months from, from submittal to execution of a permit for us to install it. So it is a little more time consuming, whereas a, a living shoreline doesn't take as long. And with the partnership we're looking at, most of the permits are already in place. So we wouldn't have as much wait time to install an artificial or a living shoreline along our intracoastal waterway.
And you do have um a grant uh that you're going after for the hundred and twenty-four thousand?
For the eight hundred and twenty-four thousand?
Eight hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Yes, yes. So and because it's what they call an implementation grant, there is a fifty percent cost share. So there would need to be a discussion about the, the fifty percent match. But there are opportunities through different funding mechanisms that we could go without necessarily going into the city's budget.
Do you apply to all seven of those uh revenue sources or you just go after one, one or two?
So we're currently also trying to put this project on the local mitigation strategies project priority list. So that way, if the Resilient Florida Program doesn't work, we have other avenues to secure funding.
Very good. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Um, I'll just say, thank you, Vice Mayor Turkin, for bringing this up. This is a great initiative. I think it'll do wonders for our community. I fully support it and I look forward to hearing from staff additional information. Now, not being a reef expert myself, I'm not one, nor am I going to pretend to be one. I just want to throw up the idea because I know that, you know, fire departments have dive teams. Is there any possible collaboration there? You know, is that something, again, I don't know. So if that is something that's possible, maybe it can have multiple benefits uh also for fire diving teams. All right?
Okay.
All right, I'm going to turn now to Vice Mayor. This was your initiative.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that presentation. Thank you so much for all the extra information. And if staff can reach out to Tess and uh thank her, because I know she did a lot of this work as well. Know she's no longer with us, but you know, sh- this, this was awesome. This has been in the pipeline for some time now. Um, so my thought process behind this was, you know, it's, it's a, you, you're hitting not two birds with one stone. You're hitting three or four, right? And I think one of the most important things, and I see the in- intracoastal living shoreline component. You know, my, if it was up to me, I would focus more on the ocean front because of accessibility. Not everyone can afford a boat, not everyone can afford diving, right? And so I think being close to Oceanfront Park allows us that revenue driver because it's, it's city-owned property. I know the permitting process with the Army Corps of Engineers definitely going to take some time, which is why I'd like to, you know, it's why I brought it up early is, you know, one of, you know, you know, first initiative. And I mean, you're helping the environment. You know, I want to make sure that generations after me can enjoy the same wildlife that I have enjoyed and people before me have enjoyed, you know? And you know, with, with Red Reef Park in Boca Raton, I think they charged twenty, twenty-five dollars for, I believe it's out of, out of, uh, out of towners down there. And so you have a way to where this, even if we didn't fully get the grants, right? You have a way to fund this over time to where then you're also, you're, you're branding the city too, right? Like, hey, I'm going to go to Boynton, I'm going to go down to Boynton, I'm going to take the kids to the artificial reef or we're going to take, we're going to check out this reef, right? So you add a little bit of identity as well. You know, for me, I know we, I've brought before discussing settlement funds. For me, this is a project that, you know, I'm, I'd like to move forward with. Um, obviously, let's see what grants that we can get. I think that's first and foremost. Bringing this up, we have now identified the living shoreline project with uh Hedrick, with Hedrick Construction. So out of investigating this, we have identified, you know, other opportunities to mitigate flooding, which we know in the east side of Boynton Beach is an issue, right? Every time we have that high tide. So I just want to thank my colleagues for supporting me on this. Um, you know, I do think that looking at ocean front primarily first would, would be my recommendation if we look at this long term. I think we should also look at um the intercoastal as well. But I want to make sure that every family, everybody has accessibility and has the opportunity to enjoy our coast, right? Because not everybody can afford a boat. So I think offering that opportunity, uh, Oceanfront Park would be um, would, would be crucial. So thank you so much again. I really appreciate you for bringing this forward. And uh, thank you again to my colleagues for tabling this um from last meeting. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Vice, uh, Commissioner Cruz.
Mayor, um, yep, same. I kind of share the same sentiments from the rest of my colleagues. Um, definitely a great idea, a great opportunity for re, you know, revenue generation. Um, I think that it's, it's really important to first apply to grants and try to get that funding. So what are we like approving today? Is it the sixty thousand to move forward with the first stage or what, what is it that we're?
Commissioner, my understanding, and I'll have staff chime in as well, but my understanding is to give direction to continue the research work so they can come back to us with uh options, plans, how they may fund this, possible locations, different variations. Uh, it's more of a general direction to continue the research, come back to us. Did I understand that correctly, staff? Or are you looking for more specific direction?
No, Mayor, we just wanted to uh have consensus that you guys are good with the project to go forward. We already budgeted the uh design portion of the project. Uh, I want to say it was a, it was a sixty thousand, right, Andrew? Yeah, so we budgeted sixty thousand for the design. Once we uh get that done, I know this is a lengthy process. Anytime you put an item that's artificial in the ocean.
Right.
People, that's going to stay there. The uh regulators will do exactly what they do, regulate it. So um, it will be a timely, uh, a time-consuming project. But nevertheless, it's going to be a really cool project for the city.
And I just want to add too that we can also work on um the two projects, the living shoreline and the artificial reef sort of in parallel because for the living shoreline, we would be waiting for ultimately the grant funding opportunity to be awarded if we were awarded that. So we could still work on the design phase of the artificial reef because the, the living shoreline is a lot easier to work with as far as a design and it's also not as expensive compared to that. So, so we could work on both projects without having to worry about major delays.
Awesome, yep. Just wanted to say I, I do support this and I think it's, it's important to get um grant funding always and forever as much as we can uh for this and really for any project that we're able to. Um, and if there are six grants available and if we could find the time, then I wouldn't be opposed to applying to a. find the time, then I wouldn't be opposed to applying to as many grants as we can so we don't have to worry about funding. That would be awesome. Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
No, I know, just real quick, I think this last cycle, the federal government approved utilizing funding for naval ships, right? It just takes time because they have to strip everything for security purposes. And I know Miami is getting one. So that may be something to look into as well.
Okay. We can look into that.
Excellent. All right. I believe that concludes this item. We're going to move on now to public audience. Before we begin public audience, I want to let you know that this is a time to speak. If you have any comments pertaining to the administrative section of the agenda, or consent agenda, or non-agenda items, but it must be within the scope of the jurisdiction of this city commission. If it is not within the scope of the jurisdiction of the city commission, I will give you a warning. And if it continues, I will ask you to leave. All right, we have two podiums. We'll go back and forth. And again, for those of you online, raise your digital hands. And after the last person in the room has spoken, we will go to those online. And let me switch to the timer. You know the drill. State your name for the record, and you may begin when you're ready. Go ahead. On my left, we're going to begin with you, Deborah.
Hi, my name is Deborah Tendrich, and I'm the founder of Eat Better Live Better. What we do is we feed families who cannot afford to eat. Right now, we've seen a huge influx of teachers who are struggling financially, or they're seeking our food support. With that being said, this is our fourth year doing our teachers' giving program, where we actually surprise teachers and all the support staff with turkeys. FPL actually sponsored a nomination process countywide, where the community can actually nominate a local public school to receive turkeys for their entire school staff. I'm actually presenting this to most of the commissions that I can, basically with my time restraints, come and present this to everyone, where I want the commission and the city to partner with me to get the word out to the public schools in the community that the teachers, the students, all the residents can actually nominate a Boynton Beach school to win turkeys for the entire staff. And anyone in the community who wants to participate in supporting additional turkeys for those who don't win, for the school who doesn't win, the turkeys, we also have opportunities for individuals to financially support, to purchase turkeys for additional schools. But I think this is a great opportunity for people when teachers are really overworked. And my daughter hasn't had a teacher in one of her classes yet this year because they have a teacher shortage. So teachers are really mentally stressed, financially stressed. And this is a really great way during the holiday season to really boost the morale in the schools, let the kids see the community celebrating the teachers, and just really make an impact within the public school system. So I have a card. Can I pass it around? On the card is my website for the Eat Better Live Better organization. Anyone who wants to actually nominate a local public school, you can go to eblb.org, click on the teachers' giving section on the website, and nominate your school of choice. It doesn't have to be in Boynton Beach, but I'm here in Boynton, so I'm assuming you all have a student or a family member who's a teacher, or enjoying the public school system. But this is a great opportunity for the community to share why they feel that their school should be supported. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on now to the right side, the right podium, or my right, your left. Set your name and begin when you're ready.
Hi, my name's Jackie. You've met me before. I'm quite under, not totally understanding this, but I'm thinking that we, this is last year, this is this year, and then we, you know, minus it, it comes out to fifty-nine dollars and seventy cents. That's almost sixty dollars. I know you're talking about going from ten percent to four percent, but sixty dollars a month, monthly, starting October first, that's really expensive, not just for me, but for lots of other people who don't have a lot of money. We know everybody's been struggling throughout our cities since the so-called COVID. And those numbers that were up on the screen earlier were like, one of them said point zero nine percent, one of them said two something. Why don't we go with those numbers? Because six percent is still a lot. Also, to save some money on the city, stop putting the poison in the water, the fluoride and the other water and chemicals that she mentioned. If you look those things up, that's pure poison. Fluoride is poison. And when you put that in there, it makes people's hairs fall out, it makes your face bad, it makes you sick, it kills your organs in your body. And that, we could save a lot of money if we didn't put that in there. And there's lots of information online about the fluoride and about the other chemical that she had said, which I can't remember the word to say it right now. But there's two hundred thousand just in that one chemical, she said. Fluoride, when that comes to the city, it comes in a giant bag and has a big X with a skull on it because it's poison. The guy who puts it in has to be in full gear with a face and everything. I've seen the videos on that. So why don't we save a couple thousand dollars, a couple hundred thousand dollars by not putting fluoride in the water and poisoning all the people in the city? And that's something that a full-on investigation should be done. That could save a lot of money to the people. And if you call up the water department, they don't want to talk about it. You ask them, hey, are you guys putting fluoride in the water? They're not discussing it. Because they know they are, and we need to stop it. And I think the whole department should have a full-on investigation. Because this is, I understand about COVID and not raising it, but that's just, you know, that's what happened then, this is now. We don't need to make up for those three years. You got all this money for all these other projects going all over the place. We're like, literally, every time we come in here, it's millions of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars each time. There was seven hundred and fifty thousand just for the chiller. That's a lot of money for a chiller. And then it was five million dollars to do something in the cities, and it was like, three neighborhoods, and it turned out it's only one neighborhood. So who's allowing all of this? This is an awful lot of money for all of us to be putting out. Instead, let's do an on, a total investigation of every single thing before any more money is spent, because we, the people, don't have the money.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next speaker. Let me reset the time. State your name for the record. Begin when you're ready.
David Katz. I thought this had something to do with age and my mother's side of the family, not with fluoride. Anyway, thank you. There's two things I want to address. One is, I think you're going to go down a very bad economic rabbit hole if you don't go to the ten percent. My water garbage bill is about eighty dollars a month, depending on water usage. Ten percent increase would be ninety-six a year. Going to six percent would be fifty-seven. You're going to save me thirty-nine dollars. We've been doing fund transfers in the city going back to when I was on the city commission. It's to make sure taxes don't go up. You can either take it from this pocket, this pocket, or this pocket. But you're going to get it from us. But I think, you know, to keep the infrastructure the way it should be, you should not go down to the six percent. And you should not think about not doing fund transfers. You did take the budget off the agenda, so I'm going to speak to something. At the last meeting, Mr. Pennsorger made a comment about that we should have somebody here, elected officials here all the time, to look over things. And I think that was code for him wanting to be strong mayor. And there's nobody in the city who wants to have a strong mayor. The person who's here to look over things is that man right there. That's the man you hired. Okay? You don't need to have an elected official twenty-four seven over looking over the city. If you have an issue with what he's doing, that's not his fault. You're the guys who hired him. It's your fault. You pushed for him, you got him, let him do his job. Don't be over his shoulder. That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard, that you need to have an elected official here all the time. And we do not want a strong mayor, Mr. Pennsorger. We do not want you. Thank you.
All right, next speaker. Say your name for the record, begin when you're ready.
Yep, Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach. I have a couple different topics I want to bring up. First of all, as you guys are, has anyone in the city gone looking to IKEA to take our mall space? We have enough space for one. There's no IKEA between Orlando and, what is it, Sunrise? We have a big space. Why not use it, you know, efficiently? We don't need two thousand more apartments. We are the most over-apartmented city in the county. We probably have more than all the other cities put together. Why don't we do something that would bring jobs and be beneficial, and that, oh my gosh, people would travel in from all over this part, from Martin, St. Lucie, all the way into Broward, northern Broward County, would come to Boynton Beach to go to IKEA. So maybe we should be going after them. The second thing is, when you all start looking for your new arts director, knowing that the arts director is no longer here with us, or so I've been told through the grapevine, I hope you all are going to focus on kinetic. We are a kinetic city. We're one of the old original art cities. We should be very proud of our status as an art city. We're leaders, not followers. We are kinetic. So maybe we should get somebody who's really going to focus hard on kinetic and the international kinetic art event, and truly make it international again, like it was, and bring in artists from all over the world like it used to be. Next up is, I hope you all are working on the holiday decoration situation. This is embarrassing. We had no holiday decorations last year because they got started too late, or whatever's going on. I hope somebody's looking at that and putting something forward. Next up, I don't know if you saw the news today, we are up to over eleven thousand people dead in Libya from the floods. What are we doing to solve our flooding problem and mitigate for that besides planting three thousand trees a year? What else are we doing? The city of Miami raised all their roads three feet up. Not that I advocate raising all of our roads and all of that traffic congestion, but what are we doing? And last up, you guys, I am a total advocate for the ten percent. I think we need to be charging the other cities more. And if there truly is a state limit and we've met that cap, then what is our lobbyists doing? Why are we not getting our lobbyists to go out and raise, get the state to raise the cap? Because we're supplying water to what, nine or ten cities? And we should be, they should be taking the bulk of the ten percent. Should not be the residents, you know, take our rate down. But if you're buying from some other city, then yes, we should raise the heck out of that and put our lobbyists to use. And I've got to say, Commissioner Turkin, this was a fabulous idea for the artificial reef. I've supported it from day one. My only concern is the global warming has bleached and killed most of the coral reef, and how would we prevent that from impacting something we do here? So that's something to consider as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next speaker. One second. All right, here we go.
Cindy Valca de Carrado. A friend of mine had owned some property here, and she hasn't been in the community for over a year and sold her property over a year and a half ago. And she's still getting a tax bill. I don't know why this is being done by the city of Boynton Beach, certificate of the business. People need to start looking and seeing why people are still getting tax bills for property that they don't own and they shouldn't have to be paying. I then, again, want to have some questions on this, and I do know that you're doing a resolve on it, but I just want to have clarity, because this is a little confusing to me. Because I see water rate adjustments inside city, then I see water rate adjustments outside city, then I see water storm and refuge rate adjustments inside and outside city. Are we paying for all of this, inside and outside? And if so, I know that you brought up the six percent to go lower, but why are we? And why is it this is the city of Boynton Beach? Another thing I want to share is it said on here to be here at five-thirty. Many of us were outside at five-thirty. Those doors were locked. It was hot outside. Some people left their jobs early and left their places early to get here on time. If you're going to put five-thirty as a time, I know that you didn't, the notice to customers from the water department says five-thirty. And we're banging on the door, no one's coming, and it's really not a comfortable feeling, especially when you're a taxpayer and you pay for the building, and you're told to be here at five-thirty, and no one's here. It was rude. People's feelings were offended because they took time out of their time to be here tonight. And they had to sit out in the hot sun. There was no benches out front for them to sit down. So whoever did this, next time, please put the proper time, because our time is just as valuable as yours. And I want to just, like I said, I want clarity in that. And also, I know that, I don't know if this is on or not, but we pay taxes for pickup service. My garbage was not picked up all week. One full week on my side of the street. The other side was picked up, but my side of the street, all of our garbage was there for over one week. I watched it every day. I'm like going, wow. And we're paying more money for utilities, and we're paying money for services that we're not receiving? Something's very wrong with this picture. I would like for you to do overhaul on every department within this city of Boynton Beach, and look and see where you can save money, who's doing their job, who's not doing their job, and fire those who are not doing their job. I'm tired. I'm tired of coming here and sharing these things with you and not getting the services that we are paying for with our tax dollars, and then being taxed more money on top of that. And I'd like to opt out of a few things, as I said. Where would I get that application to opt out of the fire department? I don't think that we should be paying that. That should have been sunsetted a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else in the chambers, we're going to go to those online. Who do we have? IT? Do we have anybody online with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
You cut off? We have what?
We have no hands raised, zero hands are raised.
All right. With that, public audience is now closed. Previously, we amended the agenda to move item 10B to this point. So we will address 10B. I'm going to call up our HR director to introduce this item. Item 10B is the in-house attorney update. And thank you, Tanille.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Tanille DeCoste, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. Nothing has changed since the last presentation, and we tabled it. The only difference is that we did not, the commission directed me not to approve, to move the additional candidate, that you were not going to interview them. So you still have the three top candidates, and this is in alphabetical order, Evra Jean-Bellany, Roger Bryant, and Shawna Lamb. So I need direction from my mayor, vice mayor, and commission. Which direction you want to do? Do you want to go ahead and pick the top candidate? Do you want to continue to keep the outside counsel? I need direction from the commission.
Thank you, HR director. I do see that we have one of the candidates, and if there's more than one that is present in the room, I'd like to give them an opportunity to speak if there's no objection from my colleagues.
I agree.
All right. All right, seeing no objection, please approach the podium and introduce yourself.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, esteemed Commissioners, dedicated city staff, and respected members of the public. My name is Shawna Lamb, and I stand before you tonight at a pivotal moment in the city's growth. I am not here, I am here not merely as an advocate, but as a committed proponent for the appointment of an in-house city attorney, who personifies the values of commitment, loyalty, and unwavering ethical standards. These attributes aren't just desirable, they are absolutely imperative for the seamless operations of the city's legal machinery. Allow me to underscore the profound impact of unwavering commitment. A city attorney who places the welfare of the city above personal gain will be a stalwart member of city staff. This commitment translates into dedicating invaluable time, expertise, and resources to ensure that the legal interests of the city are championed to the highest standards. As a city attorney, I will not perceive this role as a mere job, but as a solemn duty to safeguard the rights and interests of the city. I pledge to labor tirelessly to align the city's legal framework with the needs and aspirations of the commission, the elected representatives of the citizens of Boynton Beach. Loyalty, too, holds paramount importance. As a city attorney, my allegiance will be solely to the city, advocating tirelessly for its benefit. I shall stand resolutely in support of the policies and decisions that propel the well-being and progress of the city of Boynton Beach. My loyalty will transcend personal or professional allegiances, embodying a steadfast dedication to the greater good and an unwavering commitment to the principles that guide the city's growth and prosperity. This loyalty will serve as an unassailable assurance that I will always act in the best interest of the city with resolute dedication. The most critical attribute you must seek in selecting a city attorney, whether it be myself or someone else, is an unwavering commitment to ethical standards. Integrity is the cornerstone upon which trust is built and the realm of law. Trust is absolutely indispensable. I uphold unimpeachable ethical standards and guarantee that the legal advice and actions taken on behalf of the city will not only be legally sound, but ethically justifiable. By appointing a city attorney with impeccable ethics, you send a resounding message to your constituents, that your decisions are grounded in justice, fairness, and the highest moral standards. In conclusion, the appointment of a city attorney who embodies commitment, loyalty, and unwavering ethical standards is an investment in the enduring prosperity and well-being of Boynton Beach. It is a solemn pledge to the community that you prioritize integrity, dedication, and a genuine concern for the betterment of the city. I implore this esteemed body to consider these qualities as indispensable criteria in the selection process, for it is through them that we will forge a legal department that unequivocally serves and protects the interests of the city. It would be an honor beyond words to assume this role. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for coming. And thank you for coming. We're going to go around now to my colleagues on the dais to hear their thoughts. We have all interviewed all of the candidates at this point. And with that, I look forward to hearing everyone's feedback. Let's begin on my right with Commissioner Cruz and we'll go around the dais.
After having the opportunity to interview three candidates for city attorney, I have picked somebody who has litigation experience, has municipal government experience, and has the experience of serving a municipality within a full-time city attorney experience, which is imperative for us to have. One thing I do want to think about, and I proposed this beforehand, was that having a city attorney who works for the city and might not be a consultant per se, who receives hourly rates, although they might be good as well, would be the best interest of the city. And with that being said, because of the municipal government experience, which is very similar to our city litigation experience, experience with several departments within a city, I would like to say that I support Shawna Lamb for city attorney.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
This was a very hard decision. We have a lot of good candidates that applied to this. My position is, is that this isn't a one-size-fits-all solution, right? I 100% agree, we need an in-house city attorney. And I am also very, very confident and very satisfied with our interim and the work that has been done. I know that if we move forward with an individual city attorney, that it will, there will be a transition process. This isn't going to be an overnight, you know, transition. It will take some time, but I do believe that the best interest for the city is to have a city attorney that is here, that is present at all time. And, you know, I'll say this, I enjoyed my conversation with all three candidates, very, you know, very qualified. And what I see, what I saw last commission meeting, what I see tonight is an individual that showed up twice, waited the first time, I believe it was postponed, continued to wait and showed back up, right? Before we were even having the conversation, what I'm seeing is commitment. And so for me, my, my position is that I would support Shawna Lamb for the in-house city attorney position. However, I think we also need to think about some type of joint effort with the current firm that we have now. I don't think that one individual can handle the workload of the needs of the city, the legal needs of the city. So I think there, there needs to be a plan, there needs to be, again, a joint effort to move this, this forward, you know? But I do, I do agree and I support an in-house city attorney, that being Shawna Lamb, with, with the condition that we work closely with our current firm and see what kind of mutual agreement we can come with to outsource whatever we need with them. That's my position.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to turn now to my colleague here on the left, Commissioner Hay, followed by Commissioner Kelly.
I had the opportunity to, to interview all three. And I think we had three good candidates. I think they were all capable of doing the task. However, the persuasion that I had was the one with the most experience and in the area of city business. So I felt that I would support Mr. Bellany would be my choice for out of the three.
Mr. Who are you saying Bryant? I didn't hear you, sir.
I heard him say Mr. Bellany.
Oh, Bellany, oh, sorry, sorry. Okay. Sorry about that.
All right. Anything else, Commissioner?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kelly, your thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, you know, I also interviewed, I had received several references from associates, from, in particular, Ms. Lamb. And, you know, she comes with a requisite knowledge in city government and, and city business and litigation. And I really feel strongly about her ability to, to fill the seat as our city attorney. She also, you know, out of my, my conversation with her, one thing that really stood out to me is that she's a homegrown girl. She's from our city. And that's important, you know, that's important to me, you know, as a longtime resident of the city. You know, I, I look strongly at people who have lived here and grown up here and want to work here and that really was important to me. So, but, you know, we do have, and so I support Ms. Lamb moving forward. That is my choice. But, and I believe this has already been offered to us by Vice Sirota to stay on in the interim until we have, you know, until the city attorney team is built and established. It is not a one-person job. There is, you know, for example, there's a, a city, a little bit larger than us, that has 13 city attorneys that all do different jobs. Not only, you know, is it not a one-person job when you talk about you want your employees to go on vacation and have a break because, you know, everyone deserves and works hard and needs a break, there has to be, there has to be more than one person. And so until that team is established down the line with not only city attorney, but also staff, right now, we have one very amazing paralegal who works for the city, who does all of the work of multiple people. And so in, according to a city attorney department comes staff. And, and so I would like to, you know, obviously if they're willing and able to have Vice Sirota stay on to assist us in transition until we have a team established to take over that role. That's my position. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. As for myself, I, of course, did my due diligence and interviewed them and peppered them with questions and tried to make sure that I covered as many bases as I could. Shawna Lamb really stood out. The reality is she's just not homegrown, but you could sense her drive. It was very clear. She's hungry to do good, to be a change maker. That's what we need. Boynton Beach is going through growing pains. We are evolving and we are modernizing and we need someone to take us to that next level. I'm convinced that is Shawna Lamb. It's not just all those things, but it's also the fact that when I interviewed all three candidates, I asked, you know, tell me what you know about Boynton Beach. It was clear one person had done their homework extensively. Shawna is extremely qualified. It's Shawna's time. And so I look forward to working with her and I concur with my colleagues that there needs to be a transition period. The intent was never one person does everything. The reality is we contract a lot of our specialty legal needs already. What we need is someone here full-time that is focused on what needs to be done. And, you know, I'll tell you also that when I first became mayor and I heard from staff, one of the recurring comments I heard from staff was, I wish I could just go down and talk to the attorney and just walk down the hallway, right? So I think this will be an excellent choice for our staff who has to work with them on a daily basis. I agree that a transition period needs to happen, so I think it's only prudent to continue with Vice Sirota. I'm not sure exactly what that duration of time is. I assume until a small team is formed or some fixed number of months. But I do want to hear from our current legal counsel. I don't know if you've had these conversations with staff, what you believe is an appropriate transition? Have those, have those conversations happened?
Mr. Mayor, no, we have not had any specific conversations. You know, we've just been, you know, doing our legal services, but, but now based upon what appears to be the direction, we will start having those conversations when, you know, we'll continue to be here as interim city attorney and continue to serve the city of Boynton Beach in any capacity. Happy to do so.
Thank you. Any follow-up comments? Vice Mayor?
So what, Tanil, what, what do you need? You said you needed direction.
Well, I haven't, it's very clear.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion?
If I may.
Go ahead.
What I would recommend is that you make a motion to direct staff to negotiate appropriate, appropriate agreement with Ms. Lamb. And that point in time, once that agreement has been negotiated, Mr. Coste will bring that back to you for final action.
Perfect. So I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to enter negotiations for an appropriate agreement with Shawna Lamb for in-house city attorney.
Right, we have a motion on the table.
Second.
And do we renegotiate his contract for Vice Sirota, correct? Because you're interim city.
Could we address one thing at a time?
All right.
Let's, let's complete this and we'll circle back. A motion was made by Vice Mayor Turkin. I heard a second from Commissioner Cruz. Any further comment or discussion? All right.
Last, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to piggyback with what Commissioner Amy Kelly said, which is actually really great feedback. I agree with you 100%. One person can do the job, obviously, and we are going to need a legal team that works for, that reports to Shawna. So that's something that we have to look into down the road. I do want to thank our current interim city attorney for all the work that you've done and you're going to continue to work with us. It's probably going to take months to do the transitionary period, so if, I guess we're going to cover that in a second, but I just wanted to thank you and, and that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor of the motion to direct HR director to begin negotiations with Shawna Lamb as our in-house city attorney, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. City council, uh, city.
To operate pursuant to our retained agreement. So in, in my opinion, there's nothing that you need, action you need to take with respect to our relationship with the city at this point in time.
Okay.
And if I may, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just, I just want to clarify what I said earlier. You know, if we have to outsource some, some of our legal matters, I, my preference is that it goes to Vice Sirota because I've been very pleased. So that's, that's where I stand with that.
Yes, my understanding is that we already do that. Yep. Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, HR director. We are going to proceed forward. The next item on the agenda is administrative. This is the community support funds. The various members of the commission have submitted their request. If, well, first of all, I'll entertain any questions or comments from my colleagues, but I'll entertain a motion after for the passage of the entirety of the request. But let's begin with any questions or comments from any of those requests? Commissioner Kelly, was that a hand up?
Yes. Now, I just, one of my community support funds is kind of a kickoff to our holiday baskets that we, I came up with. The city staff at the very last minute and they scrambled and mainly, I just want to thank her, she is already reaching out and on that with city staff. And so, so this is one of my donations is a kickoff to that and also piggybacking on feeding South Florida. It's, you know, it's hunger month. And so there's a lot of different organizations that are focusing on, you know, the, you know, the issues that we have here in Palm Beach County and outside of Palm Beach County on, you know, and making sure that our seniors have food and our homeless have food and just our, also, you know, teachers and students and, and residents have what they need on a daily basis. So those are some of my, where my, some of my community funds are going. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Hay, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor? Oop, good to go. All right, and Commissioner Cruz?
No questions.
All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the entirety of all the requests. We have a motion from Vice Mayor, is there a second? We have a second. All right. All those in favor of approving the entirety of the community support fund request by the commission, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to consent agenda. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to pull from consent agenda? Section six, consent. All right, I see no, no request. With that, may I have a motion to approve the entirety of consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I don't know who is first. Commissioner Cruz may have been the motion. I think Vice Mayor may have been the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to section seven. This is consent bids and purchases over $100,000. I would like to pull one item from this section. This is item 7D, proposed resolution number R23-132, preferred government insurance trust as the city's new property liability and workers' compensation provider. I was told we have some very good news to share with the public and so that is why I am pulling that item. Are there any other requests to pull? Vice Mayor, then Commissioner Cruz.
Uh, 7B.
7B, we're going to pull 7B. This is the task order for Southwest 8th Street improvements from Mulbry Road to Boynton Beach Boulevard. Any other requests?
That's what I wanted to pull.
Same item? All right. Anything else from my colleagues on the left?
No.
May I have a motion to approve the remainder of consent bids and purchases?
Don't move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hay and a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of approving the remainder of consent bids and purchases, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. Let's address the pulled items in order, which, beginning with 7B. Let's begin with the task order for Southwest 8th Street improvements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Good evening.
Commissioners, esteemed colleagues, members of the public. My name is Mario Guzman, Director of Public Works. Here we have.
Good evening, my name's Carl Fermenti. I'm the project manager for Southwest A Street. I'll give you a little background on the project. The road was scored back in 2019. Several segments of the road scored as a D. That was, you know, four years ago, so those scores obviously have fallen off. A lot of the distressed areas of pavement are on the commercial end where Home Depot and the other retailers are. We plan to break this project up in four phases. And basically it consists of milling and resurfacing. There's some structural road repairs that need to be done. Also, there'll be some traffic calming features added as you enter the residential portion of that corridor. One of those will be at Third Street, which is where a new development is going in. And the other one will be on West Ocean. So with that also, this project, there are some corrections that we'll need to make to make the sidewalks. On one side, there's a concrete sidewalk, the other side, there's an asphalt path. Both of those are, there's some areas that we need to address to become ADA compliant and also some repairs that need to be done because of breakage, age, and otherwise. In addition to that, there'll be some, on the residential corridor, there'll be some concrete work done to make a complete sidewalk network that will serve as a segue to some future projects that we're planning in the Lake Boynton Estates area.
So if you haven't known by now, this is the person on the ground working with contractors. So I just want to bring a lot of the team, everyone from Public Works up. Thank you, Paul. Done a phenomenal job as all the road paving projects. So this, is this your first time talking?
I believe so, yes.
There you go, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to, let's begin with Commissioner Cruz and Vice Mayor for questions and comments.
Thank you so much for this. Always happy to see Mike, Mike. Just happy to see this. Thank you so much for all you do.
Yeah, thank, ditto. Thank you. Super excited to see this. Super excited to see additional traffic calming measures. I know there's some of there already. You know, this is like a split between District One and District Three, you know? So I think this is, this is awesome. You have Leisureville on one side, residential neighborhood on the other. I just want to, Mario, we had discussed this earlier. Can we just elaborate on the project that will, I, I think you mentioned it, sir, that the future projects we're looking at in the neighborhood east of this for road repair and I believe there's some flood concern.
Correct, correct. So this particular project here.
So this particular project here is part of the 2223 CIP cycle. Next year, 2324, we are looking at Lake Boynton Estates. It was brought, our team prior to paving and looking, I think it was, Fourth Street has some flooding issues. So we're working with utilities, trying to mitigate, how can we address some of those flooding issues before we start paving? If we pave and you have water sitting on top, it just deteriorates the road faster and faster. We don't want to just wait on that and not do anything in Boynton, Lake Boynton Estates. So we will be addressing some of the main corridor roads that are not flooding in conjunction with addressing some of the flooding issues. So now's the optimal three before we tear the roads up to address some of that flooding. But that's what we have this year slated in our CIP. And I believe we have $1.4 million appropriated towards that project.
Perfect. And then that'll.
Just to add to that real quick, the southeast portion of that neighborhood is fairly good. It's not prone to flooding, whereas the other end of the neighborhood is, it's very involved. It's going to require some drainage and a lot of engineering work. So it's going to take us a little time to, you know, prepare that job for proper construction.
Perfect. I really appreciate it. Thanks for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there anything else from my colleagues, from Commissioner Hay or Commissioner Kelly?
I just want to say.
Mike.
I just wanted to say congratulations to both of you for getting this going. I'm looking forward to it. There are many spots over the city that we need to address, and this is a good beginning. So just keep the good work going. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly, any thoughts?
I wanted to say thank you, but I also, you know, want to recognize that the reason this is up before us is because of pricing increases. And so that's a, I know that's something that we spoke about earlier, and that's a challenge that we're having in every single department. So, um, so I just, I, you know, that's one thing that, you know, we're seeing more and more of these, these task orders coming back to us because of pricing changes. And so I just want to, you know, that's something that we're looking at on every single one of our departments, that everything is going up. So thank you, though, for pushing it forward and getting it done and so that we're not seeing another increase before the project finishes. So thank you, guys, for all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. No comments from me? Motion to approve? All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
The second came from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of approving item 7B, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to item 7D, proposed resolution number R23-123. I'm going to turn now to our HR Director to introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. Taneel DeCoste, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management, and I have.
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Morgan Clubke. I'm the Risk Manager.
So Mayor and Vice Mayor and Commissioner, we currently have Florida Municipal Insurance Trust for Property Liability and Workers' Comp Insurance. Every year, we have to renew, and it's time for renewal. So our current risk broker provided us the new cost for our renewal for insurance. And of course, staff was not happy with it at all. We directed them to go back out and receive another quote from Preferred Governmental Insurance Trust. And next slide, oh, you can keep it there. So as you can see in front of you, if we, our rates last year was $1.1 million. It increased with the renewal with FMIT, $2.4 million. And that's because property shot up because of the flooding and so forth. So with the new quote, we received a quote from Pidget, which came back at $2.3 million, approximately $7,000, $70,000 less than before. But not only that, we also increased coverage. And I'm going to turn it over to our Risk Manager to explain.
So the city took the opportunity with our broker, Garen Group, to hire a certified appraiser to go around the city to assess our assets. With that survey, it allowed us to have a more accurate assessment on our values of the property we have. With Pidget, they were allowed to use that versus FMIT, where they do just an asset survey. So we increased our insured value to $257,337,400.
And what was it before?
Um, before.
It was $211,000.
Yes.
So we increased the coverage.
So it was an increase of.
I'm $200 million, sorry.
It is an increase of just over $45 million in total insured value. Under the property insurance, we had an increase in coverage for equipment breakdown, which would increase from $50 million to $100 million to assist the city with any equipment breakdown claims. And then, lastly, inlet and rain coverage increased a little bit over $200,000 to assist us with any boats, vessels, trailers, generators, anything like that that would need to be submitted under a claim. And then, under the workers' compensation and general liability, those coverages mirrored the same as that we had with FMIT this current policy year.
So in a nutshell, Mayor and Vice Mayor, we reduce the, we reduce the cost of insurance, but we increase coverage. So we need your approval to have our city manager sign off all documents.
Thank you. Where does one begin? But let's turn to my right, and that's where I'm going to begin, on my right. Did I say?
Wow.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. This is really great work. Just positive things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Game changer, as usual, your whole team, you and your whole team.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, you know, great, great decisions, staff. You know, Neil, how long have you been here now?
I think eight, nine months, sir. About eight, nine months.
Millions. We said millions and millions of dollars. So, you know, thank you for partnering with us in our vision for the city and being fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hay?
Yeah. I'm sure that, what do you call it? Pig, pig, pigrit?
Pidget.
Pidget. I'm sure they have a good track record.
We used to have them before.
Used to have them before. And anytime I can get more for less, that's a no brainer to me. So job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. I'm not going to add too much, but, you know, again, here we have another premium that was significantly increased and it pays to shop. So I mean, that's something that we've learned now in various avenues in the city is it pays to shop because it was going to get increased. And by shopping, we saved a little bit of money. So, you know, thank you, guys, for doing that. But it's one more thing that is increasing at the city. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I like what you said, Commissioner Kelly. It pays to shop. When was the last time we did this, or the city did this?
2004.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think the last time, when did we switch to FMIT?
So we had Pidget from 2016 to 2020, and then we've had FMIT since 2020. Each year, the insurance renewal will come up, but I can't speak to that they've shopped around necessarily in the last couple of years. I was not currently present for that, so.
Well, I just want to thank you and your team and the city manager, of course. This is obviously a step in the right direction. It is a no brainer. The only thing extra I'll say is I'm changing your name on my phone to Millions, because you're saving us millions. That is your new name.
I have a great staff.
Yeah, I do want to say one thing about Morgan. She, our former risk manager, he took a job in Boca, and she stepped up to the plate. She was in interim capacity for probably about what, the last six months, Morgan? And she was just, this month, named Permanent Risk Manager. So job well done.
Thank you.
Anything else from my colleagues? If not, may I have a motion to approve item 7D? I had a motion from Vice Mayor Turkin. A second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of approving item 7D, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to public hearing. Item 8A reads AMP Warehouse Storage Building, CDPA 23-010. I'm going to turn to our council to open the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 8A is a request for a community design appeal pursuant to Part III, Chapter IV, Article III, Section 3A, Architectural Enhancements of the city's Land Development Regulations. It is a quasi judicial hearing. So if there is anybody who's going to be speaking to the commission on this matter or even possibly still thinking of speaking, if you could stand and raise your right hand at this time to be sworn in. Do you, just raise your hand. There we go. Any, do you swear or affirm that the testimony gave you the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, before we start, real quick, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner. That's fine.
I just, I wanted to clarify the record that it was a while ago, but I realized during the interim that I did actually have a conversation with a representative from AMP. So I just wanted the record to reflect that I did. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to hear from the applicant, and then we're going to hear from staff. My recommendation, and we do have two podiums, we don't all have to crowd in one area. Let's begin with that, after which we will go to public comments. All right? So please begin and state your name for the record.
My name is Fernando Nunez. I'm here representing American Molding and Plastic on this application for a design appeal. So to touch back on the points that we're trying to get relief from, the architectural enhancements, the code currently requires three of these decorative elements, which is columns, cornices, bending, et cetera. We've met the code, but only on the facade that faces the street. The other three sides, which are backed up in the property, we're asking for relief. The second item being sought relief for is the restriction on using metal panels on buildings. Code currently only allows brick, stone, stucco, and split face block. And we're proposing to use metal panels on the sides of the building. And the code also requires that all downspouts be routed from the exterior of the building into the interior of the building. Because the building we're trying to get built is a metal building, it's a pre-engineered metal building. We can't, we can't ask the manufacturer to alter their fabrication process to accommodate this requirement. And so we're asking for relief on that as well. Okay, you can see on the screen, the image on the left, I'm just trying to reflect that the property is linear in fashion. The front of the property is on West Industrial Drive. The property itself, I think, is about 100 feet of frontage and 600 feet in depth that backs up to what is I-95? And that's what you can see on the right image with the rectangle, the red rectangle being highlighted. Next slide, please. So this is what you see from the street as you're driving by the property. It's basically the existing building is sitting on the north side of the property, and it runs its tire length to the back. There's maybe like 150 feet between the back of the existing building and the back property line. And the new proposed metal building is actually tucked in so that half of it is hiding behind the existing building. And since we started this process, the property owner, the applicant, has gone ahead and put slatted screens into his front fence to also aid in preventing the metal building from being seen from the street. On the landscape plan that is located on the bottom of that slide, you can see that we're actually proposing landscaping along the south property line, north property line, and along West Industrial Drive to, it's going to enhance the experience of anyone traveling down the road. Next slide, please. In applying for the design appeal, there's, I believe it was seven or eight points where we needed to address why this particular project was not going to be not meeting the intent of the code. And we believe that the intent of the code for the downspouts and not allowing the metal building or the metal panels or the metal panels was to enhance the architectural aesthetics, the appeal of any proposed projects. So what we've done, can we move on to the next slide, please? These are the seven points. I'm not sure if you guys would like me to just read what's on there, but...
I would recommend you do a brief overview, and then if there's any further questions, we'll ask.
Okay. So going back to the main points. For item A, I mean, the proposed project, we're of the position that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This site is currently zoned light industrial, and the future land use map designation is also light industrial. So none of the existing properties along West Industrial or Industrial Drive are going to be changing zoning designations. Item C, it says it's consistent with the purpose of the standard for which deviation is requested, granting the request will equally or better meet the purpose of the standard to be appealed. And then that's where I kind of meant that, you know, we're adding things to the project above and beyond what was required. We're putting Bahamas-style shutters facing the street, decorative louvers, decorative banding and trim, stucco Wayne Scott on the west. We're actually going up 42 inches on the sod facing the street. He's doing new light poles and fixtures throughout the entire property. We're doing landscaping throughout the entire property. The next point is it's asking to save or preserve existing trees or desired floor. We are not removing any existing vegetation. We're just bringing in, you know, the eco-friendly butterfly-attracting plants. We're adding a bunch of shrubs, trees, ground cover. Item E says, will the project have adverse environmental impacts, and that cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions? There's no adverse environmental impacts with what we're proposing. We're simply just wanting to locate a metal building on what is currently concrete-covered area of the property. Will it reduce the quality or quantity of light or air available to adjacent properties? The proposed building is not any taller than the existing building, and it's not going to block any of the adjacent properties from getting any natural sunlight. I guess you can argue that with the implementation of all the landscaping that we're proposing, we're actually increasing the air quality in the area. And then it's item H, it says, is necessary to further the objectives of the city to assist with economic development and business promotion. Obviously, they've outgrown their space. They're currently unable to manufacture as much as the clientele and customers are needing, and they're using a lot of the existing warehouse for storage of the products that they're making. Implementing and allowing for the construction of this metal building, they can relocate a lot of that inventory and product into the storage building, which would free up more floor space for equipment, machines, employees, et cetera. Next slide, please. This is the proposed building. You can see on the above rendering, that's the side of the building that faces West Industrial Drive. That's where we've put all the decorative articulated elements that the code requires. And the bottom rendering, that's basically the same on both sides of the building. And then to the left, I'm showing in that blow-up all the landscaping that's being put up along West Industrial, which is going to enhance and beautify the experience of whoever drives down the street, and at the same time is going to assist in screening the view of the building in the back of the property. Next slide, please. So as far as the city's push for sustainable development, this particular metal building is composed of 70% recycled materials. And after this building's useful lifespan, it's able to be recycled and reallocated again for, you know, reuse and recycling, et cetera. Again, the points, we're adding new landscaping, the LEDs throughout all the new site lighting. That's another thing. He's adding new LEDs for all the entire site, not just the area where the new building's going. So we're going to have LED building-mounted lights on the proposed building and the existing building. There's going to be electric vehicle charging stations. Next slide, please. And these are, the code required, sustainable points that you have to meet. I guess for a building that's over 5,000 square feet in the city of Boynton, you have to hit 25 of the sustainable points. And this is how we achieved meeting the code. Again, the cool roof, the roofing material has a solar reflex index of average of 98, which the code, I think, requires 95. The building color, the Arctic blue, again, it's got a very high solar reflectance index. The shade structures, awnings over the glazed openings, the skylights, there's 10% of the light necessary for daily use. All the appliances are Energy Star. There's a recycle station. There's an efficient water heater on property. And then again, because the building is recyclable, we got six points from staff because the building itself is 70% recycled and can be recycled again. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you so much. And sir, if you could introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Chris Angelo. I am the owner of American Molding and Plastics. And I would just like to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present tonight, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. I sincerely appreciate your time here this evening.
Thank you. We're going to turn now to staff for a staff presentation. After we've heard from staff, we'll go to public comments, and then we'll go back in reverse order.
I'm going to make it really briefly because my voice is going down. My name is Jayon Kim with the Planning and Zoning Division. I am going to overlook quickly of this project. This property is surrounded by the industrial properties, as you can see, north and south. So they are not subject to any additional spatial buffer requirements because they are used, is surrounded by the consistent with the neighboring properties, as you can see on the location map. The currently property is about the 1.5, close to 1.5 acre. Next slide. Going back to backgrounds a little bit, many, one more slide back again. Thank you. These are the images, existing properties. As you can see, there is right now existing about little over 16,000 square foot of a warehouse. The applicant is proposing in the back end of the property along the railroad tracks. He's adding the additional warehouses. If the warehouse is not going to be used for the office or any other functions, it's going to be solely for the storages for his businesses. Next slide, please. These are the review criteria for, these are the requests he's asking. He's requesting the relief on the facade treatment as well as the downspouts. Next slide. These are site plans and the landscape plans. The applicant is trying to draft the landscape plan to meet the maximum as that site can accommodate it exist. Thank you. The applicant is actually providing continuous hash entries to provide it in a further screening from the adjacent properties. Next slide. These are the review criteria to review the community design appeal. That concludes my presentation. The staff will recommend approval and no further conditions unless the city commission has any further conditions of the approval. Staff are fully supportive about this request. That concludes my presentation, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Before we go to public comment, is there any questions from any of my colleagues to either the applicant or staff? Seeing no questions, let's go to public comment. If you would like to speak specifically on this item, now is the time to approach the podium. For those of you online, raise your digital hands. We will take digital hands up until the last person in the chambers have spoken. Seeing no one approaching the podium, in-person public comments are now closed. IT, is there anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
With that, public comments on this item is now closed. All right? Is there anything that the applicant would like to respond to from staff? Anything that was said? Okay. All right. Staff, is there anything to follow up on? Okay. I have to ask. I have to ask. Let's go around the day. So if there's any questions or comments, let's begin on my left. Go ahead, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I, you know, I think this is a prime example of when you make exceptions when you're talking about an industrial area that, you know, you know, this is, it's meant to be industrial. And I really, you know, I want to commend you for going though above and beyond and wanting it to look, look nice and landscape and, you know, adding, you know, the wildflowers and making it, you know, and adding to the area, you know, in, you know, in adding this, this metal building. And, you know, that it's, it's even more environmentally sound than we could imagine with a stucco building. So, you know, so I fully support this. I think that, you know, this is one of those exceptions where it makes sense to allow this type of, of building to, to be in that area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hay.
No question. I just want to congratulate you on the enhancements and wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thanks for putting this forward. I know it's been quite the process. So I appreciate all the hard work and the changes. You know, hopefully this doesn't take this long again. Definitely want to make sure that we have the reputation of wanting to do business and invest in the city. Industrial areas, I think, are a one-off compared to the rest of the city, right? So with me, you know, a motion to approve, you know, let's get it done.
Second.
Okay, I was going to wait for Commissioners. No, no, it's okay. But she's not here. And I haven't even spoken yet either. But eagerness is good. Let me just say a couple of things, and I'll go to the City Manager. You know, I have, I do disagree with something. I disagree with all the conditions that we've placed on them. I understand staff is doing what's on the code. I understand that. You know, I've studied the situation for, for the longest time. I've read through extensive records of emails. The reality is, we have a company who came to Boynton Beach to invest. And the reality is, on top of that, which is, you know, we, I'm so glad that you, you want to come here, and you've, you made your, you made this your home. But we've also given you the runaround, and I'm not talking about our present staff. That's not what I'm talking about. This is all in the past, you know? And because of that, they have lost business, they have lost employees. I have seen their product. Guys, this is a shed. It's just a shed. All right, let's just state, say what it is. It's a shed next to the highway. No one's going to see. Why was the process this long in the first place for our shed next to the highway that no one's going to see? They have lost people, they have lost money, and they probably lost business partners or commitments from other businesses. I see a head nod there. And so, first of all, I'm happy that we're here, we're finally moving forward. And thank you to all the staff who met with them and, and did everything that we could. Again, we're reeling ourselves out of the stone ages and making lots of changes. But I think the larger conversation, and we don't have to have it today, but the larger conversation is, if we have another business come to us that want to invest in the city, they're bringing jobs, they're doing well, they're recruiting other companies because of what they're doing, why are we giving them a hard time? Do we not have a more expedited process, you know? So I want to have that conversation in the future because if we have other companies come, and this is our reputation, this is unacceptable, right? We are going to keep losing out. And economic growth, the things that actually change people's lives is my highest priority. So I want to drop that in all of your ears for a future conversation we can circle back to. And Commissioner Hay.
Also want to say I agree with you. But when we, where we see improvements, let's make those improvements. I don't like the flavor that I'm hearing constantly of blaming the previous administration, staff, or anybody else. Where we see improvements, let's make it as a commission and not point fingers at anyone. I'm for a better Boynton Beach. I'm not here to identify who did what in the past. So from this point on, I would appreciate if we see room for improvements. Let's state that and work on that and move forward. I don't want, I'm tired of hearing this negativity about previous administration. Let's just move forward and make Boynton a better place to live.
Commissioner Hay, I appreciate that. I think, I think you make an excellent point. But just for clarification, my intent, and this is why I don't say names, my intent is for the public, for the business community to know that we are making changes because the reality is, they think that we're doing it, right? And that, then that becomes our brand. I just need them to know. It's not about blame. It's about knowing that, you know, it's about we're moving forward and we're taking the next steps. So please don't confuse us, and that is my intent. This is why I'm not saying names. So just so you know where I'm coming from.
And I hear you, Mayor, but can't we restate it and say, here is an opportunity for improvement?
It is an opportunity for improvement. Excellent.
And that's all I'm saying. And let's move forward. Because I don't want the perception out there that we had bad staff, bad administration, bad anything, okay? This is an opportunity for us to improve the way we do business in the city of Boynton Beach. And that's what I'm saying. That's where I'm coming from.
Absolutely, and that's what we're doing. Vice Mayor, were you about to say something?
I agree with both of you, but I think it is very important to understand why there needs to be an opportunity. You cannot fix something if you don't identify a problem. So I think it is crucial, and the mayor, you said it best, for the reputation of the city with the business community to invest dollars into the city of Boynton Beach to know that we are open for business because economic development is a driver that has feelers and tentacles to everything, every other initiative, right? When you invest in the city, you have public safety, you know, and we're able to generate our tax rolls. I mean, I don't need to explain how it works, but I think it is very important to identify that, yes, there is opportunities, right? You can't, you can't just throw stuff under the rug. You know, you can't change something if you don't know something that needs to be changed. So I think it is very important to identify the past. But I do agree, I do agree, I do agree.
That's a good one.
With, with, you know, we need to move forward. And so I just, and people watch this, people, the business community watches. They watch what we're doing. And for a very long time, no one wanted to come and do business in Boynton, or they're very hesitant. And I think, you know, I think there's points on both sides, but I do agree that, you know, we have to identify the past to better the future. Thanks.
What I haven't shared with any of you is that there are a lot of people at the county level who, I don't know how much I can say, but who have, what's the best way to say it? Who have placed the blame entirely on me and this administration. And so, you know, that's, that's where I'm coming. I'll, I'll leave it there, because we need to move forward. City Manager, you, you had something to say?
No, I just want to say, Chris, I know it's been a long process. I know I went out there probably close to nine months ago. I know the BDB has been of assistance, and they've been kind of guiding us along the way and things like that. And a lot of, for those of you who don't know, I know Chris and your company, you've actually helped our utilities department out in the past when we were in a pinch.
Yes, we have. One of the operations we performed there is CNC machining, and your water plant went down. And the part was approximately six to eight weeks, and we were able to make it in two days and get the water plant back up. Just, just for the record, just so you could put a timeline in perspective, it was, it's been two years and three months since the first initial contact and approaching the city with this project.
Yeah, and I just, I want to thank the mayor. He, he really spearheaded this, and he was the one that actually brought this to my attention so staff could make the necessary adjustments. Obviously, no apology is going to take back two years, three months, but we are moving forward with improvements. And I think that's what you alluded to as far as looking at how we can better accommodate some of our businesses that are growing, are providing jobs. So appreciate the commission's hard work.
All right. Any other further comments from my colleagues?
Nope. Keep my motion on the table.
All right, make the motion. Yeah, motion to, motion to approve. This is 8A. All right, is it 8A? Yes, it is. Motion to approve 8A. All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And there's a second. Would you prefer a roll call?
Whatever your preference is.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Welcome to Boynton Beach.
Thank you for all of your...
Thank you for staying.
For not giving up.
Right.
And we do plan on staying.
But one last comment is that, to Dan's comment, is that in fact, yes, both you, Mayor, and, and Dan, you took us under your wing, and you did spearhead this. So I sincerely appreciate your, your efforts, both of you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item, item B. This is 8B, Proposed Ordinance Number 23-016. Second reading, amending Chapter 27 Advisory Boards and Committees. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 23-016. An ordinance to the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 27 Advisory Boards and Committees of the City of Boynton Beach Code of Ordinances, providing for updating and updated language, standardization of appointment and removal process for regular and alternate members, qualifications for city advisory board members, and clarifying duties and responsibilities to city advisory boards, provided for conflict severability codification and effective date. This ordinance is before you for second reading, and a public hearing has been scheduled at this time.
All right, is there anything from staff? Nothing?
Yeah, the only thing I'll say is that you see in the ordinance as presented, the shaded text are the changes that were made at first reading.
All right, so I believe if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Kelly, this was your item, Advisory Boards. If you'd like to begin.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I made my position clear at the last meeting, but, you know, I believe that, you know, government should not be involved in selection or de-selection of art. And I feel it's unnecessary pressure on us as elected officials to have that burden on us. And so, but, you know, that's my position. That's how I, you know, but, and I understand, City Attorney, I knew you mentioned, there was some, there was one item or one, you know, it's line 376 having to do with the timing of allowing for any sort of appeals. It's my understanding that Florida statute may govern. Or there was some recommendation from you that that not be 60 days and it be 30 days. Can you clarify that position?
Yeah, there's not necessarily any specific statute, you know, that governs this provision. But just, I know that a lot of the appellate rights that relate to development orders are more in the 30-day timeframe. You know, somebody was to file an appeal with the court on an action that you took with respect to development order, that timeframe would be 30 days. So that was my only suggestion. I had that concern about delaying, you know, somebody's rights if they're granted, you know, a development order or an approval in this case. But, you know, ultimately, it's your decision as far as city commission, as far as what policy you want to take.
Right. So, I mean, that was kind of my position. My concern was that, you know, to allow more, you know, more than 30 days, I feel like then we're just fishing for people to, to be opposed to certain art so that, you know, there's this appeal process. So, I mean, I, you know, I don't really support having any sort of appeal process, but at the, you know, if that's something that happens, I would, I would, would want to see it be more 30 days than 60 days. I do support updating the guidelines for the art board and selecting pieces. But as I stated before, I'm hesitant to limit artists to just local artists. We have many artists who grew up here, who went to our art schools, and maybe they have moved away for various reasons. And so by us limiting the art bank to Florida, we're, we're completely cutting out any possibility of featuring, you know, a possible local grown artist who maybe they have moved away, but they're, you know, born and raised here and gone to art school here or gone to, you know, school here. So, you know, those are some of my, you know, thoughts and opinions on this. And, you know, but I'm just, you know, this is something that was, it came up as, it was supposed to be a very kind of easy cleanup, and it turned into more of kind of a complete overhaul of the art board. And so, but, I mean, those are my positions. I don't think that we should have, you know, we should even have this appeal process in place when it has to do with the art board. That's why we have the art board is to separate ourselves from decisions like that. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to turn now to, actually, before I do, I just want to clarify so I understood... All right. Thank you, Commissioner. I want to turn now to Commissioner. Actually, before I do, I just want to clarify. So I understood everything you said. You said a couple of things.
Mm hmm.
Um, you, the first thing I heard was about sixty versus thirty days. You're, you're in favor of thirty days. That was one of the things.
Right. I mean, if it, if it moves forward, um, with us, with there being this, you know, veto appeal process, um, then I would like to see it be thirty days as opposed to sixty days.
Okay. And the other thing you said was about, um, limitation on where we can get art?
Correct.
Or where the artist has to be.
Right. Right. So.
The artist itself.
Correct. So it's worded right now, I think, um, that it would be the state of Florida. Um, and I just, you know, I think that we're really limiting ourselves to, uh, to artists. And I understand the point. It's my understanding that the art board already puts, uh, local artists as priority. Um, but, uh, so, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't like the idea of limiting it to Florida. I think that we're, we're cutting out, you know, a lot of, uh, great artists.
Was there a third thing you said? Or was that it?
No, that was it.
That was it? All right. Uh, Commissioner Hay, any thoughts?
Yeah, I concur, uh, with what, uh, Commissioner Kelly has stated. My position basically is still the same. We are a kinetic city, as I call it. And, um, I don't think government should be, um, selecting out. I'd, I'd, I don't want that unless there's a real challenge or controversy. But, uh, I, um, I don't support the concept of, and I, I guess I want a clarification about the location of choosing the art for the city. Uh, did, did we agree on limiting that or not?
Um, as drafted, if you look to line three seventy, right now it says that the, um, installation of artwork including murals to be installed pursuant to the city's Art in Public Places program that is produced by a Florida-based artist with a preference for artists located in Palm Beach County.
Yeah, I do not agree with that. That's the one piece that I do not agree with. Art is in the eye of the beholder and we're, we're saying to a developer that you must pay X amount of dollars not to exceed a certain amount, hundred thousand, whatever it is, and 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 the art may not be found in Palm Beach County or Florida. It may be in some other state or even in some other country. Why are we limiting art? If someone wants to pay, uh, eighty thousand dollars for a piece from Spain, so what? I mean, art is art. So I don't see the advantage of limiting it to the state of Florida. So I disagree with that. Just let the developers, uh, and the art department, they work on that. Select the, the art piece, they talk about it, and if there's a problem, then it comes to us. But other than that, uh, I don't want to see it. But if we're going to start limiting, uh, art, we may not get the pieces that we are looking for. So I just say, open market on where you get it from. Doesn't bother me. And I don't see why it should bother anyone, really. Those are my comments.
Commissioner Hay, before we move on to the next person, um, you spoke extensively about, uh, where the art can come from or the artist. What about your thoughts on the thirty days?
Thirty days.
Okay, all right. All right. Let's go to Vice Mayor Turkin.
Thank you, Mayor. So my position on this and how this came about is, you know, very simple, I think we need to think about. And I definitely hear what you're saying, Commissioner, is people have a voice, right? And we're elected to be a representation of that voice. And unfortunately, we saw a lot of pushback and people identifying that there was a process that did not work and the transparency we, we was failed, right? You know, I'm not going to point names. I'm not going to say anything, but it was failed. And so for me, you know, I think as a representative, you know, and I know this, this has happened in, you know, different district, but as a representative and I am representing, you know, twenty plus thousand people in my district and they're concerned about something and I don't have the ability to deliver on that concern or to deliver to the people and why they elected me for something, it's concerning. I think there should, you should have the ability to do that, right? Even more so, if we didn't have an art assessment fee and we were more business friendly, I, we wouldn't even be in this mess, right? Is art, is it, is it a government operational necessity to have art? No, I don't think, I don't think so. And whether there's art or no art, you know, I can get to my job, right? If the road's broken, right, I can't get to my job. So then I'm affected, you know, as, as a working class resident. So I think we really need to look at this art assessment as a whole. I understand the concept. I just think at this point in time, with the rapid development, growth and evolution of this city, that we need to focus on infrastructure and operational necessities that better our residents, right? Again, you know, I've said it before and I'm sure the post or whoever's listening will quote it. I'm not the biggest art guy. I'm not an expert in this. That's why we have a department. And it's why we have people that we appoint to the board. And I definitely agree with you, Commissioner Hay, is not wanting to see it, not wanting to have making decisions, you know, and and letting that to be autonomous. But at the end of the day, appointing individuals is our responsibility. And, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure that what gets done, you know, we're aware of because we're the ones that get the blame, not, not, no one else. The people come to us because they elected us. And so, you know, my last point in, in respect to, you know, having that art, you know, more, having more focal, um, point in, in Palm Beach County. You know, I don't think we should limit it to the county. I do like the language of preference. But, you know, when we, when we sit up here and we preach and talk about economic development and supporting local businesses, are we not being hypocritical by outsourcing this art elsewhere? I totally understand the, the accessibility of it and even, you know, if, if a developer wants a certain, you know, piece of artwork, right? And they can't get it within Florida, well, then maybe that's a sign that we need to look for something that they can. Because for me, I will always support local businesses and local residents in anything we do, right? As long as it's cost effective. This art assessment fee is, comes out of the developer's pocket. So why would we not want to take an opportunity to support our local residents and local businesses when it comes to art? Maybe they didn't go, maybe they moved away, right, or, or they're from here. Like, I could, I can understand that. And if there was a way that we could identify, hey, you know, they were local at some point, like, I would maybe be open to that conversation. But I would look at that more as in, as in preference. But I do think that if we are going to sit here and discuss, you know, supporting local businesses, supporting local artists, this is the way to do that and bring those tax dollars back to the community, back to the, into the pockets of people who spend their dollars in the community. So that's, that's my stance on it. You know, I'm not, I'm not black or white on this. You know, I think, um, you know, I think there is a happy median, but what, the reason we came here is why I want to support some type of safeguard from this happening again because it is our duty to serve and is our duty to deliver for our constituents and our residents. And again, you know, this, this whole, you know, there's an unrelated item, but, you know, we got here for a reason. There's a lot of pushback. Commissioner Kelly, you said it best about this was supposed to be a simple process and then just became completely different. So those, that's my stance on that, you know, uh, if, in regards to thirty days, sixty days, certainly don't, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with either. I'm not cut and dry with that. I just want to make sure that we have the ability to represent our constituents and do what we can, you know, if there is something controversial. But I also don't want to open the city up for, for lawsuit or anything. So that's, that's where I'm at. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Cruz.
Can we go to line one eighty-eight? We're there. Yep. So if I remember correctly, Commissioner Turkin mentioned at the prior meeting military service to be included as part of the, um, the reasons for an excused absence. However, I don't know if it was the, the minutes or whoever drafted this did not include that in the document. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention, um, and because you brought it up, do you still want to keep that in there or are you okay leaving it out?
Yeah, no, um, I, I don't know what, like, I, thank you for bringing that up because if I, I feel that if it's said, I can just turn the other way and I don't have to think about it and good catch. Thank you. Cause I.
I read.
Catch that.
A lot.
And so, but, but I'll, I'll save the comments for offline. Um, no, I think that should be included. It's.
They want to include it.
Yeah.
Just making sure. So, um, we would need to include military service with the highlighted and not strike out to be, um, conducive of what we agreed upon in the last meeting. Um, and it makes me a little bit nervous because now it's like, what else is missing? So I, I did go through it. It, you know, but so one of the things that, let, let's really focus on the purpose and the why we're doing this. The reason why I brought up this amendment to the art advisory board is because I had outcry from the community in my district, my constituents, the people who elected me into office, asking me to not, um, approve a specific piece of art. Again, this is something that, this is the first time that I've experienced this. It might not be the last time. So, you know, in regard to what was said earlier, you know, which I believe it's important is understanding who we're serving. And, you know, I do understand that art can be a bit controversial at times and that, you know, people might have an eye where, you know, they might see things one way or another. But when you have certain, um, pieces of art that do not reflect the will of the community that are not, you know, appropriate for children, that are not something that should really be extremely, I won't get into the detail of it anymore, but it's not something that belongs in our community, in my opinion, and in the opinion of many of my constituents. And I am following the will of my constituents. And if I do nothing, then I think I'm doing a bad job. So the reason why I brought this up was not my personal opinion, but rather listening to the people who elected me and listening to really the constituents who are going to have this, um, piece of art very close to their homes and they're going to have to drive by it every day and have their kids look at it. And it's, you know, a fifteen foot statute. It's not just a tiny thing. However, this, uh, proposed ordinance is not only to focus on one piece of art, but rather to focus on the future and understanding that the arts board is in fact an advisory board, which advises the city commission and it is meant for that purpose. However, I do understand that in the past, there was that exemption created to allow things to go directly through the arts board. But I do believe that it is imperative and necessary for us to include veto power in the commission, especially when we have things that are very controversial. If we have no veto power in the commission, it's kind of like really purposeless. Um, and, you know, it doesn't really serve, um, our community. It doesn't. So I do respect everyone else's opinions and I understand that art is in fact subjective. Um, however, you know, it, this is very important to my constituents and therefore it's, it's very important to me. And I would like to move forward with this as proposed. Um, I do understand City Attorney that you mentioned about maybe a sixty day timeframe, bringing that down to a thirty day timeframe. I thought that by maybe, you know, increasing the timeframe, there would be an opportunity to do something about, um, about it now. So I would like to move forward, continuing with the sixty days and seeing what legal avenues we have to exercise, uh, for this purpose. And then in the future, if we decide that, you know what, it's too much of a timeframe or we, we encounter any sort of legal issues, I'm more than happy to bring this back to the table and bring it back to thirty days if in fact it does, um, you know, create that issue at that point. However, I think it is important for us to maintain, as we all voted yes on this, um, a few weeks ago, and we voted yes on the sixty days, that we maintain our word to the community and that we support the people who came here and showed up. Um, and that we do what's right for our constituents. And with that being said, I would like to continue with this moving forward. I support the sixty days. I'm happy to look into it in the future and potentially decrease it if it's, if it turns out that it's an issue. But for now, I do want to maintain the sixty days as was approved already by this commission, um, before. And, um, again, just the purpose. The purpose is to understand that the arts board is an advisory board, which should have an advisory capacity. It can have the opportunity to approve art as it's presented, um, at the time that it's presented to the board. However, if it comes to a point where there is outcry in the community and there's certain concerns with certain features within certain artwork that might not be appropriate, whether it's for children or whether it's just not something that fits into our community, uh, I want to give the commission the opportunity, whether it's my district or anyone else's district, to bring that up and be able to bring relief to the community. And that's what it's really all about. Accountability, relief to the community and putting our constituents first. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. I saw a hand up from Commissioner Kelly. If you wanted to respond.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Um, you know, I just, I'm, I, um, I, one of the things that we had also changed and added, um, I just was, and it's part of the art fee, um, is that prior to commissioning and purchasing the artwork, the city in consultation with the owner and developer would have a public workshop that would have to take place, would be noticed and would have to take place before the advisory board's public meeting. And that was specifically for the goal of the artwork design, location and visibility to be brought before the public so that the public had input in advance of it going before the advisory board. So I am, I, I am standing firm and I will, on thirty days, I will not move forward with it being longer than that because I feel like some of the other things that we put in place, like requiring the public workshop, give the public an opportunity to see the artwork in advance of it even going before the advisory board. The advisory board is also another public forum that the artwork can be seen. Um, and so I don't feel like we need to go beyond thirty days for what I would consider almost a fishing expedition of, you know, potentially public outcry on artwork that has been through multiple meetings before that. So, um, you know, that's my position on that. We had, we also, you know, like I said, we put in place, um, public workshops for that purpose. So the public would have, um, lots of opportunities to see the artwork before it's commissioned and before deposits are paid. Obviously, um, the situation that, you know, we have, it, it, I, I don't know all of the facts as to what happened and how things happened the way that they did. But again, we're here to, uh, to fix a problem. I understand that. But I have to stand by my position of no more, I don't think that we need to have more than thirty days when we have all of these other things in place for the public to have input in artwork.
The, the issue with that, and, and I hear where you're coming from, the issue with that is that a lot of times the public is busy working, taking care of their kids, cleaning their house or going to meetings, whatever it is that they do, to the point that they might not even know that anything is happening until it comes to the board. That's the problem with a lot of, you know, let's say, development where people might not know that things are happening and the same way with art. Um, the reason why I wanted to change the date to sixty days versus thirty, it's because I wanted it, this new ordinance to have an impact with what's happening to my constituents now. If we do thirty days, it's going to have no impact. So all of this would have been wasted time. That's the reason why I would like to, you know, stick with the sixty days. I understand, you know, your point of view, but at the same time, we have to understand that I wasn't even, you know, I wasn't even focused on the art until I started getting phone calls and emails and, you know, just a lot of, a lot of attention towards this specific piece, which has never happened before in my time in office. So again, I just want to piggyback, piggyback on focusing on trying to help our constituents and doing what's best for our constituents and making sure that, you know, creating a rule has an effect on the current outcry that's happening in our community, um, if it. In our community, um, if it, if it turns out down the road that it's, you know, it's too much, we can always bring it back down. But we, it will be harder to bring it up. And I think that having it for sixty days will actually make an impact. Right now, or at least will give us the opportunity to try. If we make it thirty days. All of this would have been wasted time and the entire ordinance would be purposeless.
Vice Mayor, your thoughts on thirty versus sixty? Cause I, my very strong opinions on this side, very strong opinions on this side.
Yeah, I'll just. Listen, at the end of the day, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a big. Advocate for doing what's right by your people and what they want, you know, whether it's thirty, whether it's sixty. For me, doesn't matter, but I'm going to admire what Commissioner Cruz is doing for her district. And I just hope that that admiration goes both ways at some point in the future. Um, because there's been many times where people from my district have came and cried out and the opposite has been done. And so I'm not going to do that. I'm going to support you, Commissioner Cruz, with what you have presented forward and I support it as it is. With the uh, correction to the military service. And I just want to say, and I'm sure this was a mistake, but the optics of that is horrible. That like we all identified and said, hey, we're going to do this. So I trust the staff, right? And, and I'm sure this was just an easy peasy mistake, right? I'm going to have grace on this, but I just want to point that out that it's important. That when this happens and it happens more than once, for an individual, I think it allows, it, it creates, you know, distrust. So. Thank you again for, for catching that, uh, Commissioner Cruz. And again, I don't, I don't want to do the blame game. I'm sure it was an honest mistake, but I just want to. You know, it's. I, I just want to put the importance on that. Um, so that's it. But I support you, Commissioner Cruz.
I cannot believe.
Okay.
We are having a conversation about thirty versus sixty days. Um, I understand both of your positions, um, very strong, very strong opinions here and. Listen, at the end of the day, I know everybody means well, everybody's fighting for their constituents and their residents. Uh, but we need to move forward. So for the way I see this, just so everybody understands where I'm coming from, because I know. All of you uh, mean well are doing their best and all of that. Is that on one side of the equation, there is legal concern, right? And I always tend to. Reduce legal concerns. So for now, I'm going to support thirty days. Uh, but with, with the consideration that, you know, if this becomes an issue in the future, I'm happy to move it to sixty. And again, the only reason for that is there is legal consideration here that I have to factor in. So can we please move on and can we talk about the preference for?
Mayor, the legal consideration is an opinion. It's not necessarily a fact. And I don't believe that, or I don't know if there is actual case law to prove that it is an actual concern with sixty days.
So counsel, I mean, you, this was, this is you're the attorney. I have to do.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is, is there any case law that states that if you make an ordinance sixty days versus thirty for an appeal? Period that a city will get sued.
What was your reasoning, counsel?
Well, my reasoning was to make this more consistent with other appeals that the city has. Um, I have a concern. There's, there's no case law I'm aware of, but have a concern with respect to undue delay. With respect to an appeal process. Uh, but I, I leave it up to the commission to set the policy. And if it's your decision to make it sixty days, then sixty days it is. If it's thirty days, it's thirty days. If somebody chooses to um, file suit, we would certainly defend the city in that. And argue that the city was within their legal right to set the sixty day appeal. You know, I was just looking at it for more consistency basis um, with respect to how you currently treat uh, other development orders.
Okay, so, so it's for, thank you.
You're welcome.
So it's for consistency, but there's no factual case law that proves what's being claimed in regard to. Making it sixty days and the city getting into any um, potential issues. I. I just don't, I, you know, I. The way I see it is that if we don't do sixty days, all of this was wasted effort. And it will be pointless and. That's it. I mean, if, if we, I mean, I've, I've tried to support other people with their districts. If somebody was upset at things, I've tried to support that and understand. And put the constituents first. If we're not going to do that, that's okay. Um, we can just go ahead and vote and move on.
Uh, Mayor? Yes, Commissioner Hay.
I just feel that I am supporting uh, District One. I just feel that the, the art selection is a process. And people are aware and if they have strong objections, they're already stating that. They are aware of the situation and they will believe me. They will follow this. And I feel that thirty days is ample time, okay, uh, for them to, to, to respond. I don't, I don't see, you know, again, I feel like the mayor, I mean, here we are. Talking thirty versus sixty. Uh, I just don't feel that uh. That sixty is, is necessary. Uh, I think thirty is, is more than adequate.
But the last meeting you thought sixty was fine, but this meeting you don't, you know, with all due respect, I believe that. You know, focusing on the issue and focusing on the purpose, right? Like, why are we creating this ordinance? Because there's currently public outcry and it's for a reason. And so if we create an ordinance that has absolutely zero effect. On what's currently happening in our community, we are ignoring our, you know, our constituents. We are not listening. To the will of the residents and. The, the reason why I'm pushing for sixty and I've said it two, three times, it's because if we make it thirty days. This will have absolutely no effect. If we make it effective today, if we make it sixty days, we could try to see what we can do. And have an opportunity to help my constituents with their concerns. Um, like I said before, I'm more than happy to bring it back down the road and bring it down to thirty, but I do want to attempt. To remediate the situation and to allow ourselves the time or to allow me the time. To make an appeal for my constituents and for my district. And I know that there's.
Let her finish and we'll come to you.
You know, I, I, I would rather have this conversation, this conversation um, with our attorney in private than getting to a whole thing right now. I would, you know, again, it's your choice how you vote, but I, I would definitely appreciate a sixty day. I don't think I asked for much. Um, and again, it would, sixty days makes a difference, thirty days. Makes no difference for my constituents with the current public outcry that we have. So that, that's it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz, Commissioner Hay, and then Commissioner Kelly.
Uh, again, it's the truth be told, this, in my opinion. You don't have to comment, but you probably will. It's political. I mean, if, if, if there's a fifteen foot statue somewhere and I'm riding by my car, I don't have to look at it. I just keep my eyes on the road. I mean, and it's nothing demonic about that piece. The word harmony, as I heard in the last meeting, is not a demonic term. We all know, well, I'll just say, let me speak for myself. From what I've heard and, and maybe you can straighten me out, uh, from different people who've been talking to me about this. Uh, this particular artist uh, made a, a piece that was. Totally unrelated to WXEL that people didn't like. So now it's just attack the artist and anything put out uh, is a problem. And so I, this is another, this whole thing is, is, is off track. And I just feel that we need to go with what uh, the mayor suggested. I. I'm willing to adjust down the road if we see where this presents a problem. But I just feel right now, we just leave it at thirty days. If it does present a problem. Legal tells us or whatever, we have enough. To even make a case. I don't think this would be an issue uh, as it is right now down the road. But if it is, we can readdress. And so I still hold to the thirty days and we move on.
Commissioner Kelly, then Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, David, I just have a question because I think I understand where Commissioner Cruz is going and I want some clarification from you. So if this is passed today, is this retroactive? To something that's already been decided by the arts board because. I believe I under, what I understand Commissioner Cruz to say is that she wants an appeal process. So that it's in effect for the art, for the situation that's already occurred. But my understanding is this is going forward, how it would be handled. So I just want to make sure that there's clarification on. Is this retroactive? Is this something that could be used to create an appeal process for. A previous artwork that has been approved or is this something that starts? When it's signed and it has no effect on previous art? Because that's, I think that's where we're in this. You know, I, I'm, my envision is this is going forward. We're making changes for what's happening in the future. And if, you know, and I'm thinking the situation that just happened with this recent art. You know, thirty days from the date that the art board approved it is ample enough time for us to hear from our constituents. Whether or not, you know, we need to address it in front of the commission. So I want to just clarify. That's my understanding is that this is going forward and that it, it wouldn't be able to be used to address. A pass decision, but that's, that's my question.
Right, Mr. Mayor? Right, so it, it's my understanding that this ordinance being adopted is prospective in nature. That it would not be able to be applied to any prior action of the art advisory board. Um, there is a doctrine known as equitable estoppel. It's called fair play. Where an individual, property owner, an individual, the company has a right to rely on the rules. That are in place at the time that they submit their development application. And that after they get their approval, where they've spent time, money, effort. Uh, and made their presentation and gotten their approval, that they're allowed to rely on that. Uh, not to their detriment by having the governmental entity change the rules after the game in theory. Um, it's also uh, could operate under the doctrine of vested rights. Where if you do decide to make this ordinance retroactive. Uh, which you could, you could provide a provision in it that says that this, this ordinance applies, you know, retroactively. Uh, they would still, um, in my opinion, be able to argue that they have a vested right because they have an approval. Which they obtained from the city board. Um, now I'm not saying that, you know, that, that the city uh, couldn't then try and apply. The retroactive ordinance to the, to the property owner. But I, I'm not going to recommend something that could lead to potential liability on the part of the city. So in my opinion, uh, they have um, uh. The right to rely on the rules that were in place at the time they got their approval. And while you could make this retroactive, uh, an application, uh, in my opinion. I believe they have a vested right to that approval to proceed.
Right, so, so my position is, Commissioner Cruz, I would of course support anything. Um, you know, having to do with the, the past art, but my understanding is that that's not. An option, having to do with this, you know, these ordinance changes. And so. Um, you know, so I was pushing for thirty days, thinking in the future, on future projects and future art. Um, not thinking that your position was having to do with wanting. An appeal process for the past art. So. I just, so that, I, that, the light bulb clicked on. And so I wanted clarification on that. So, thank you.
Um, I don't, I didn't want to have this conversation like this. I would prefer to just have that directly with the attorney. Um, but there were, when we talk about vested rights. There is an understanding and an assumption that things were done correctly and things were done by the book. In this case, that was not the case. In this case, this art piece was commissioned. With plenty of time. I don't remember if it was a whole year prior to. The art board even having this on their agenda and even voting on it. However, that's the kind of thing that I would prefer, I would have preferred to talk about in private. Because now we just opened a potential can of worms. So that's fine. Um. We'll just move on and, and continue with the vote.
Vice Mayor, and we do have to wrap this up, so.
So, so it was said, you know, I can drive down the street and just not look at it. This isn't about us individually. This is about. Respecting and delivering on what the community wants. It's not about us. It's about people. The people that voted this in. Second thing is that Catherine, if we can. I know I had asked for a uh, a book, you know, of the process on how this all went down. And I found a lot of serious concerning issues on how this went down. So I'm not sure if all of my colleagues had received.
I would like to receive that. I, I don't believe that I have.
And, and it goes back and I mean, the, the, the fix was in. If you look at the emails, there's, and I'm going to, let me make sure that I say. You know, everything verbatim, right? There was something that was insinuating that the art board was going to approve this. I, I think so, right? So I think it's important that my colleagues see this because again, this is a huge. I mean, this is, this is, you, you can't have, you can't have this. You can't have this in this city. You know, we all preach transparency, accountability. You know, so let's put our money where our mouth is, you know, and if, if there isn't that, then we need. To identify the errors of the past. We need to identify the mistakes of the past. How can we do that if we don't know there's an issue? I've said this earlier. We need to identify that there's issues and fix them. And sometimes they come up. And so I, I just would request that, um, what I received, if my colleagues could receive, because it's very concerning. Thank you.
There's copies in the manager suite for everybody.
Thank you.
And, and when was that going to be given to us? Because he just mentioned it now, but I've never heard about that before.
So I had prepared copies probably two weeks ago now. And I delivered them up to the fourth floor about two weeks ago, I think.
I would just say in the future, um, you know, can we please make sure that? If we have this kind of documentation and knowing that we have an ordinance coming forward in front of the commission, that's relevant to. Whatever is on the desk at the fourth floor, that we either get a phone call or in text message or an email and say, hey. This, you know, important piece, piece of information regarding something that could affect, um, something that's being worked on currently in the commission. Is here, you know, or in your mailbox and because I had no idea that that was happening and that could have given me ammunition. To do more research, to maybe make a better argument today and maybe it would have made a difference. Maybe not, but maybe it would.
Thank you.
Oh, if I might, Mr. Mayor. So uh, with respect to the, the Vice Mayor and Commissioner Cruz's comments related to one eighty-eight. To the extent that was scrivener's error on my part, uh, that'll be corrected. So you don't need to take any action with respect to that. Um, the, the issues that I've heard raised, which I think you should make individual motions on, just to make sure that we're clear before you approve the final ordinance. Um, the first one is related to line three seventy-six, the sixty days and thirty days. So I would just suggest that if there, if there is a, an impetus to, to change it, that there should be a motion made. Um, and have they voted on? The same with the, um, if there's an issue. Or, or somebody's not satisfied with the Florida based artist issue, that that issue should be voted on. And then you can vote on the final ordinance. As amended.
I do want to remind everyone that except for Commissioner Kelly, everyone voted yes. On this very ordinance a few weeks ago with the sixty days included. Just as a reminder, it's public record.
Thank you. Um, again, this is not a conversation I really want to have. Lots of things have been said and back and forth and appears that there's information that not all members of the commission had. Uh, I'll entertain a motion, uh, but if you want to, you know, we, we've got several options here. We can. We can decide this right now, right here and move on with our lives, or you can make a motion to table. And we'll make sure everybody's read all the information, whatever you guys want to do. Somebody just make a motion.
Make a motion having to do with the notice of appeal to be changed to thirty days instead of sixty days.
I heard a motion, yes, I heard a motion to amend uh, this ordinance. For the notice to appeal period from sixty to thirty days from Commissioner Kelly. I heard a second from Commissioner Hay.
And I just, can we, and I just, this is for future projects and future art.
That is what the, our attorney advised me. That's my understanding. Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All those who oppose, say no.
Nay.
All right, we have a motion passes three to two with Vice Mayor Turkin and Commissioner Cruz dissenting. Okay, next item about the preference for artists and location. Somebody make a motion so we can move on.
And make the motion that the location of the, the scope not be limited to just Florida.
Actually, could we, can we just go into the language before, I'm sorry. Can we just go to the screen?
Put it up on the screen.
It's line, line 370.
I just want to make sure I understand the language exactly and as the motion.
So currently, the language says, installate, starting on line 369, installation of artwork, including murals, to be installed pursuant to the city's Art in Public Places program that is produced by Florida-based artists with a preference for artists located in Palm Beach County based on the criteria in the Art in Public Places guidelines.
So, go ahead, Commissioner, and I have a question myself.
Just reading it, to be installed to city art places that is produced by Florida-based artists with a preference for, a preference. Okay, that, that, that doesn't say it's limited to, right?
Right.
It can be.
Limited to Florida, but prefer, preference to.
Preference to Palm Beach County.
But prior to that is Florida.
Now, the one before that, it says, produced by Florida-based artists. I'm saying that should not be in there. That is my motion. It should be.
Second for discussion.
What is the proper legal way to say it's open and not limited to Florida?
Okay.
I'll second that for discussion.
You're going to second changing, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not clear what the motion is first.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to get some.
Do you want me to give you, I'll give you some language. So installed pursuant to the city's Art in Public Places program that is produced by an artist.
And.
Or, or you can just take that phrase out completely.
Or just take out.
And just say that.
Just strike that out?
You could just say to be installed pursuant to the city's Art in Public Places program with a preference for artists located in Palm Beach County.
Yeah, now let me understand.
Okay. It's a, it's only a preference.
We take out the, the Florida base and preference, the word preference doesn't say it's limited to.
Correct.
Right? It could be, okay, then that's my motion.
All right, again, second for discussion.
Okay.
The reason why I added Florida in there was to be able to track the money. There's a lot of questionable activity surrounding this statute and the way, not the statute in itself, but rather the way that certain people in the city handled this, this art in question. And so the problem when you have a contract that comes from out of state, it's that it's, it's more difficult to track. When you have money coming in from inside of the state, it's a lot easier to track than outside the state. So that's the reason why I brought it, I brought it up for accountability, to make sure that we know that things are being transparent, that things are being done correctly, and that we don't have art purchased or commissioned before it even goes to the board. And, you know, potentially events and celebrations of this being passed when it hadn't even gone to the board yet. That really brings me concerns, specifically with, with the contracts and whatever happened in between there. It's just not, it's not right. And it, it needs to be questioned. It, we need to find out what happened. And I know we, I know we have an investigation team and I would appreciate commission direction, at least to look into that and figure out what happened with that contract. Why was the commission, what was the piece commissioned? I think it was about a year prior to that. And maybe we can use the report that's, you know, on, on the desk and provide it to our investigations department and see if they can find anything. And I will be looking also.
All right. We're going to go around from my left, Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Hay, then Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And I. Yeah, no, I, and I'm just wondering if we could kind of leave it open, but with a preference to Florida and in particular Palm Beach County. It opens up the spectrum. This whole what happened, I agree 100% that we need to figure out what happened so that it's fixed. My understanding is that they, I don't know what happened. We, I don't think any of us really truly know what happened except for one person or maybe a handful of people. And that does need to be fixed. And I think by us addressing the guidelines and readdressing that and amending the guidelines, this has opened our eyes to an area that needs to be looked at. This line, though, and I truly support us supporting local artists. I think it is, it is very important that we do that. I just fear that we're opening our, not opening ourselves up, but almost limiting the artists that are out there. So I'm just wondering if, I don't, and I don't know if it'll fly, but that we have a preference to Florida-based artists located in Palm Beach, like can we, would it be, would my colleagues agree to have there be a preference to a Florida artist and in particular a preference to Palm Beach County? And so then that way, we're not completely limiting ourselves to just Florida. I 100% support that we need to put priority to local artists. We want to keep the money here. I understand that. But there's also artists outside that I think we, you know. So that's my position is if we can change, you know, word it so that we're not completely limiting ourselves to just Florida and Palm Beach County artists, I would, that's my position on that.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to ask you to clarify the language in a moment, Commissioner Kelly. But before, before you do that, can I just say, listen, I'm open to finding out what happened as well. But I feel like that's almost an administrative matter. I mean, the art director is a city employee. I would ask that, we ask the city manager to bring back some information because he works for them, right? So if there's concerns about what he did or didn't do, or, I mean, that, that sounds like an administrative issue. Because I, I really don't know. I, but if something went wrong, I mean, naturally I'd ask, what, did management keep track of it? What do they know? I mean, I, I really don't. So I'm just hungry.
I know.
I should have ate, I should have ate before I came here. Sorry, guys. Yes, Commissioner Hay, you were next.
Are you hungry too?
I just feel that if something was done wrong in the past, it should not penalize all. And it should be found out what went wrong and corrected. I would live with the word that Commissioner Kelly said. We put that word preference and, and, you know, instead of produced by Florida, just like we did with the preference on the artist. So just, just change the word to preference, you know, and for Florida, I can live with that. But I don't want it to, to, to limit it to just Florida or limit it anything, okay? Yes, sir.
If I might, Mr. Mayor? So, so what I'm hearing, I think the question would be to Commissioner Hay, if he wants to amend his motion to contain the language that Commissioner Kelly had with respect to preference for Florida-based artists with a particular preference for Palm Beach County.
Preference, yes, that's my motion.
And, and the secondary of the motion was Commissioner Cruz, if she would be acceptable to that amendment.
Negative.
Okay, I have a question and then we'll go to Vice Mayor. Commissioner Cruz, one of the things that you had mentioned was that by limiting it to Florida, it was easier to track the money. I didn't fully understand that because I don't know what the process is by which we track money. And I don't know what that has to do with Florida. Nobody's ever explained that to me. Is there anyone from staff that can talk about that? Because I, I don't know what that process is. I don't know if that makes a difference because.
So with the, with the procurement of these pieces on the private development, the city really is not involved with contract, like the developer contracts directly with the artist. So the city's not involved in that. The way that we are able to just, or under, know that the appropriate amount of money was spent was through receipts from the developer and also through, I think sometimes they use art appraisers who appraise art. But there's no, like, we're not, because this is on private property, the money doesn't go through the city at all. They manage that completely, the developers, the contracts with the artists. So we're really not involved.
All right, Vice Mayor, I know you've been waiting.
Yeah, so I respectfully disagree with, with y'all have said, you know, I, I think of two things, right? Like accountability, transparency, you know? Simple, I, I think, like, I should, we shouldn't even have this conversation, like, you know? But we are, and it is what it is. Second thing is, it's time. Put your money where your mouth is, you know? And for me, if I support local businesses and I support local artists and I want to give back to my community, you know, like, how, how do I do that? There's only so many opportunities that I can do that. So when I look at this, I have an opportunity to support local artists. I have an opportunity to give back to the local economy by making a decision that will, that will guarantee dollars going back to the local economy. Preference is great. It's a really nice word. But when it, when it, it doesn't mean anything. It's subjective. There's no standing in the word preference. And so I think it's important that if we want to serve our community and do the right thing by our residents and not just here in the city of Boynton, but our neighbors to the north, our neighbors to the south, the county, the state of Florida, then why would we not want to help that? And what does it hurt to try? We can always come back if we get some feedback from, you know, staff in the, in advisory board that we're not able to procure. It doesn't hurt. The, the other thing that was proposed, sit 30 days, 60 days, totally understand. There's some legal hesitation there, totally get that. But what is the harm in trying to support local artists and businesses? And if we can't address that, then we can always go back and change. But again, I want us to be weary of the word preference. It doesn't have any standing. And so for me, I would like to support our local economy. I would like to support our local artists. It's important for me. It's one of the things that, you know, I ran for. And, you know, I think it's just the right thing to do. Why, why procure art to people outside of our state, outside of the city when we can help people that maybe are struggling or help people, you know, that are getting on their feet, that come across our way, you know what I mean? So that, that's where I stand. I'm going to try to help my local community. I'm going to try to help our local artists. And, you know, I don't think preference is going to do anything besides just, you know, make us feel good. You know, I think, you know, action, actions speak louder than words. And so the action is to require local artists, and I'm going to go with that action. Thanks.
Last thing I'm going to say, just to piggyback on that, you know, city attorney, when you say you prefer something in a legal document, does that carry any legal weight?
Well, I think when you would be looking at two different pieces of art, say, and all things being equal, if there was one that was produced by an artist in Palm Beach County, then all things being equal, that one would.
But with art, all these are not.
Well, I mean, I mean, that's, I, I'm no, I'm no judge of art. But a preference means that you're going to give some type of additional consideration to that artwork.
And if that initial or additional consideration is not given, then what are the penalties?
I mean.
Done, right?
Well, I, it, it depends, you know, I'd say it depends, but it depends. I mean, what is, what, you know, what was, what were the facts? What were the, what was the information provided? Was there some other consideration that was, that caused somebody to vote in favor of the art that wasn't necessarily, you know, produced Palm Beach County? So it's, it's difficult for me to say.
Thank you. I think my question's pretty simple. Is there any, does that carry any weight? Does a preference really carry any weight when, when things are not equal? And if somebody does not give preference where this ordinance has to give preference, what are the consequences? There are none.
And that, well, no, there, there may be. There may be consequences that that art that wasn't produced by a Palm Beach County artist doesn't get approved or doesn't get selected. If somebody chooses not to follow what's in your code, then, you know, maybe there's the ability to challenge that. It's just, you know, there are a lot of different factors. So I can't really say what the penalties would or wouldn't be.
So it's not legally binding?
Well, it's in your code and somebody should follow what's in your code. So.
Should, yeah. But it's not legally binding.
Well, if they don't, then it's up to a judge to decide whether or not it's legally binding or not.
Right.
Mayor, I call for the vote.
The, the motion, can we clarify the motion and the second? Because Commissioner Cruz did reject the second. There wasn't a second on.
Right, so the, the motion to amend line 370 was just to have, to eliminate the requirement that it be produced by Florida-based artists and just have a preference for Palm Beach County.
Okay, is there a second to that? Is someone going to make a sec? I know you, yeah, but I'm waiting for a second.
Second.
All right, there is a second, okay? Can you restate the motion so it's absolutely clear, counsel?
In line 370 of the proposed ordinance, the language that the art be produced by Florida-based artists would be removed.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose the motion, say no.
No.
No. The motion dies, all right? We have myself. Sorry. Vice Mayor and Commissioner Cruz dissenting.
So do we need another motion to put this forward? Right?
So if there's no other amendments, I'm, I mean, let's, let's hurry this up.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to keep line 370.
No, you.
To approve the whole thing.
Okay, motion to approve.
Right, so the motion to approve with that one amendment.
Yes, we have a motion here from Vice Mayor Turkin.
Can you read, can you read that amendment?
The amendment was the 30 days as opposed to 60 days.
Okay, so move.
Is there a second?
I don't like the 30 days.
You said you don't like the 30 days?
I don't, but at least it gives the veto power in the future, so I'll go ahead and second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. This is to approve item 8B with this, we will, with, with that amendment that's been stated already. So let's go to public comment. If you would like to speak on this item, this is second reading. A motion and a second has been made. If you'd like to speak on this item, now's the time to approach the podium. All right, excuse me, excuse me, no yelling, just one second.
This is the time for public comment.
Yes. Yes, Commissioner Hay, let's answer your question first.
60 days that we are talking about here now?
No, that was amended to 30 days, correct.
30 days.
Correct. This is the time for public comment. If you choose not to speak at this time, you won't speak during public comment related to this ordinance.
Yes, public comment, now's the time to approach the podium. State your name for the record and.
My name is Ace Tilton Ratcliffe. Commissioner Turkin talks a big game about respect, doesn't he?
I'm going to ask you not to direct any comments to any particular member of the commission. Those are our rules. Generalize it to the whole board, please.
Public art programs benefit Boynton's community. Economically, public art increases property values, encourages development, and draws in tourists, see Wynwood, Miami. A 2017 study conducted by Americans for Arts found that the arts industry delivered almost $500 million in local and state government revenue for Florida. Socially, public art contributes to civic pride and brings people together. It can also improve mental and physical health. Boynton Beach's art board meets monthly with public agendas available in advance. Unfortunately, we rarely see commissioners at our meetings. An exception is Commissioner Turkin's threatening our removal from the board if we didn't vote the way he wanted us to on Harmony. He didn't respect us enough to stay for the whole meeting. We also had Commissioner Cruz briefly show up, but only long enough to say her piece. Had either of them stayed, they would have realized that much of the information demanded at the following commission meeting had been answered by PBS's presentation, where children interacted with Harmony and the board's subsequent discussion. If commissioners cannot prioritize attendance, I encourage an additional amendment requiring the city record those meetings, fix public comments so they don't cut out, and post them online for accessibility. Without attending meetings, the commission failed to realize that the board already places a priority on uplifting local artists when spending taxpayer or grant funds. However, insisting developers. However, insisting developers limit themselves to Floridian artists is counterintuitive to small government, deters developmental freedom, and forces Boynton into insularity. It also removes the elevation from bringing in renowned and, in the case of Patty Guoreshinas, internationally recognized artists, the exact kind of work that encourages tourism and money spent. I hope you will adjust the language to promote local and Floridian artists while maintaining the option to consider and include national and international artists. We are a diverse city and we deserve to experience diverse art from outside of Florida. Additionally, a 60-day appeal by the board will only slow down local development and undermine the intended purpose of a board. If the commission actually chooses to be involved, 30 days should be plenty of time to appeal. Appeal and veto powers make sense, but should require explicit definitions. Without specifically defined criteria and objective measurement of the will of the people, i.e. statistically significant, neutral, and scientifically rigorous, an overarching veto creates the opportunity for tyrannical and transphobic censorship, such as we have seen attempted with Harmony. You'll also notice the room is nearly empty for public comment on second reading for the people who seem to care so much. Specificity and how the public is involved will also serve to help create quantifiable statistics illustrating how public art improves Boynton Beach. Similar reports about the impact of public arts programs already exist for cities like Delray and Boca. I strongly encourage you to stand up for what is right by suggesting changes to these amendments. Please continue to use your powers to allow for a diversity of ideas and viewpoints and an art board that performs its tasks to the best of its ability. Thank you.
All right, next speaker? State your name and begin when you're ready.
I'll use this one. Phyllis Pacelli, a long-term, 20-year resident, resident here at the city of Boynton Beach. I'm also a member of the Art Board. And I think first and foremost, I want to thank all of you for your hard work. It is late, dinner time, I get it, so I want to thank you. I also want to thank Commissioner Turkin for talking about operational necessities as a priority. And I agree with you, sir. And as a resident, not just an Art Board member and not a person who appreciates and loves art, but as a resident, there are priorities. And sometimes aesthetics have to sit, sit aside sometimes. So if that were to get moved forward, I would encourage all of you to consider operational necessities as a priority, especially infrastructure. Our board, I'm, I'm very, very thrilled to see the changes that are being made because as a board, doesn't, the board currently without this ordinance doesn't have to listen to anyone, including you. We're not elected officials, we're appointed by you to represent the people. And when people outcry, where there was a public outcry, our board didn't listen to anyone. In fact, they snubbed their nose at two sitting commissioners and 100 residents. The other people who spoke at that particular meeting weren't even residents of the city of Boynton Beach. They were employees and people who lived other places. I'm a resident, I'm a taxpayer. You need to have this veto. If this board or any other board is so arrogant that they can do whatever they want and they're not even elected, that's completely wrong. You need to sit back from all this smoke and mirrors and look at the facts. We are an advisory board only, advisory. Think about that. Also, I think Florida should always be a priority. And that if necessary, we could appeal and say, look, this is what we want, we can only get it someplace else. Local and Florida should always be a priority, thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else in the chambers, IT, do we have anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right, with that, public comments are now closed, you've already heard the motion and there's a second. I'm going to call the vote, the motion is to pass this proposed ordinance with the amendment that's already been stated.
We're not doing it separate?
Separate, which item, Commissioner?
The ordinance has been amended, so you're, the motion is to approve the amended ordinance with the amendment being the 30 days.
30.
Right, but then the other.
The other motion failed.
Okay. So, okay.
Okay, so this is the motion to approve this with the amendment. All right, and I heard a second, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously, this ordinance has been approved with the amendment made. Oh, that's, that's right, let's do the roll call anyways, I mean, it was unanimous, but does it make a difference? No, okay.
I think you're fine, I heard a unanimous vote as well.
It was, it was clear. Okay, we're going to move on, I just want to make sure I don't skip anything. We're going to move on to item D. No, C, sorry, I'm on the wrong section. Proposed ordinance number 23-017, second reading, amending chapter 27 Advisory Boards and Committees' Public Art Fee. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 23-017, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending chapter 27 Advisory Boards and Committees, section 27-21 through 27-27 of the city of Boynton Beach Code of Ordinances regarding the public art fee, providing for an amendment to the amount of the public art fee to be paid for specific developments within the city of Boynton Beach, providing for exemptions to the payment of the public art fee, providing for an update to the process for the consideration of art in public places, providing for conflicts, severability, codification, and an effective date. This ordinance before you for second reading and a public hearing has been scheduled at this time.
All right, thank you. Who would like to begin, Commissioner Kelly, would you like to begin?
It's fine, I don't have any, I am happy with the additions that we had previously, so I am, I don't have any.
Okay. Commissioner Hay?
I'm good.
You're good?
Good.
Vice Mayor?
Nope, I'm good, and think it's, again, another opportunity to help local businesses. And so definitely supporting it.
Right.
All right. Commissioner Cruz is not in the chamber at the moment. I did speak with staff, and Catherine, can you please correct me if I'm mistaken? I believe it was this item about scheduling the workshop, is this, this item? Scheduling the workshop simultaneous to the P and D to save time? I think that was the intention, right? Did I?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's the intention.
And is that reflected here already, counsel?
No, that's not part of the ordinance, that's more procedural. It wouldn't be outlined in the ordinance, but that would be what I would like to do so that we're not creating a whole bunch of extra meetings to do both at the same time.
All right, sounds good, well, thank you so much for that, I think it's a good idea. We're going to proceed to public comments, if there's nothing else from my colleagues. If you would like to speak specifically in item C, this is 8C, proposed ordinance number 23-017, now's the time to approach the podium. All right, seeing no one approaching the podium, is there anybody with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
With that, public comments are now closed, I'll entertain a motion to approve proposed ordinance 23-017.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Turkin, here the second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, all those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, it passed unanimously, please note that Commissioner Cruz was not in the, in the dais at that time. We're going to move on to item 8D, proposed ordinance number 23-018, second reading, wireless communication facility annual registration, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 23-018, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the Land Development Regulations, Chapter 3, Article 5, Section 13, Wireless Communication Facilities to allow for an annual registration process and fee, providing for conflicts, severability, codification, and effective date. This ordinance before you for second reading and a public hearing has been scheduled at this time.
All right, thank you, go ahead, Jen. One second.
Good evening, this is Joon, Principal Planner with the Planning Institute. Good evening, mayors and commissioners and vice mayors. There's no changes from the first hearing, but however, I'm here to present if you prefer that way, or I'm here for any.
If you could do a quick summary?
I'm sure.
This is second reading after all.
Yes, so. So the staff is proposing amending a small portion of the section 13 Wireless Communication Facility, Chapter 3, Article 5 of Part 3 Development Regulations to be a little more aligning with the current industries. The code was dropped nearly 12 years ago. So the first slide. So summary is that we want to adopt to establish the annual registrations and associated fees. Also, we would like to modify the languages regarding telecommunications facilities on the public tree on the property. And then lastly, we'd like to clean up some languages that regards to unsafe wireless communication facilities. That concludes my presentation and I'm here for any questions.
Well, that was brief, thank you. Anything for my colleagues, any questions for comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain public comments at this time. Again, this is item 8D, proposed ordinance 23-018, Wireless Communications Facility Annual Registration. If you would like to speak on this item, now's the time to approach the podium. Okay, seeing no one approaching the podium, is there anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
Okay. With that, we're going to come back to the dais, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
To approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all right? All those in favor of approving item 8D, proposed ordinance 23-018, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously, let it be reflected in the record that Commissioner Kelly is not currently in attendance on the dais. Moving on to item 8E, proposed ordinance number 23-019, second reading, eight-year general employee pension plan, I'm going to turn now to counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 23-019, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Article 2 of Chapter 18 of the Boynton Beach Code of Ordinances entitled Employees Pension Plan, amending Section 18-94 to provide for pension contributions by drop members, amending Section 18-127 Deferred Retirement Option Plan to provide for eight-year drop, repealing Section 18-300 Creation of Consolidated Deferred Retirement Option Plan of Article 11 of Chapter 18 of the Boynton Beach Code of Ordinances, providing for codification, conflicts, severability, and effective date. This ordinance before you for second reading and a public hearing has been scheduled at this time.
Thank you, is there any questions for my colleagues? Is anyone interested in hearing a presentation from staff? Okay, let's do public comment on this item, again, this is item 8E, proposed ordinance number 23-019, eight-year general employee pension plan. Okay, seeing no one approaching the podium, we're going to go to those online. Is there anyone with their, with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right, with that, public comments are now closed, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Okay, I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Turkin, here the second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of the motion to approve item 8E, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to all of our general employees. Item 8F, proposed ordinance number 23-020, second reading, Boynton Beach Amendments to the Seventh Edition 2020 of the Florida Building Code, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 23-020, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving the Boynton Beach Administrative Amendments to the Seventh Edition 2020 of the Florida Building Code, providing for conflicts, severability, codification, and an effective date. This ordinance before you for second reading and a public hearing has been scheduled at this time.
Could you turn on the mic, please? The mic, turn it on. Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome.
Good evening, Commissioner and Mayor. My name is John Kuntzmann, building official for the city of Boynton Beach. Do you have any questions or concerns about the amendment?
Commissioner Cruz, do you have any questions for this or comment?
No, I remember the first reading.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I wasn't here for the first reading. So I just want to propose an amendment that I think all the residents could benefit from, so, section 105.2, it talks about work exempt from permitting for replacements or repairs up to $1,000, is that correct?
Correct.
So what I would like to propose is doubling that. We've seen costs of construction go up anywhere from 17% to 22%, 24% over the last three years, especially during COVID, yet the cost of this exemption has not increased. I know that it is reassessed every, you know, maybe three to four years from what I've gathered from staff. So I would like to propose an amendment to increase that, that, that cost from $1,000 to $2,000 or $2,500, whatever you guys think is fit. You know, a piece of lumber four or five years ago is completely different, almost double what it is now. And so, you know, for residents who are, specifically single-family homes are doing some work on their house, maybe replacing a fence, you know, I don't, I don't think we should punish them for inflation that's out of their controls and we should be able to do what we can at the city level, you know, to help, you know, something that's, you know, just as simple as replacing a fence gate, you know, or a portion of your fence, you know, as an example. So I would like to amend this and increasing that 1,000 to, you know, or discuss if you guys would be okay, 2,000 or 2,500. I know staff, if, they made a recommendation to me.
Vice Mayor, can I ask you to pause for one moment? Can I ask staff to get to the slide of this item, so I can understand this a little bit more in detail?
If, if you would go to the attachment to, that's in the agenda item, and it's on page, PDF page 15. Now that's the ordinance, go to the attachment. There you go. And scroll down to PDF page 15.
All right, and can staff or counsel give me some context first, so I can consider what he's saying? Tell me generally what this is about, the section, and then, so I can consider what he's saying.
That section is for items that do not require a permit.
Okay.
And there is a dollar value as well on that. Historically, it's been $1,000. I would not have a problem with increasing that amount because there's still parameters on what's, what requires a permit. Items like Vice Mayor was talking about, fence replacement. Okay, fence replacement, that's easy, that's, you can replace a few panels with, with new panels. It doesn't matter as long as it's permitted. For me, that's maintenance, and maintenance is paramount for, for, for your home. It keeps costs down. And in the next section, there is in detail of what you can do before a permit is required. So raising that dollar amount is, is no problem for me.
Okay, Vice Mayor, anything else? I just make sure I understood everything.
That was, that was it, I just.
Sorry, that was it, I just want to make sure that we.
I don't mean to interrupt, but also in item one, items were, that was cleaned up a little bit to include some more work and kind of narrow if you're doing electric or if you're rearranging the plumbing, that requires a permit because you're going into the sanitary system. So some of that stuff was, was cleaned up to broaden the, the scope of work.
Thank you, Jen. Yeah, so I would, I would just propose that we change that $1,000 to $2,000 just to keep up with inflation costs of construction. I don't think it does any harm, it just helps, helps residents who, you know, you know, maybe don't want to go through that process and, you know, I just think it's the right thing to do.
Okay, all right, anything else from my colleagues? All right.
Second, second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second with this amendment, or this is just for the amendment, with just the amendment, all right? All those in favor of making this amendment as stated, say aye. All those in favor of making this amendment as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, clearly that was unanimous. All right, motion passes. Let's go to public comment. All right. Let's do that. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item, now's the time to approach the podium. Seeing no one approaching the podium, is there anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised. Or no.
No hands online.
No hands online. With that, public comments are now, are now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve item eight F.
Will move.
Commissioner Hay, I heard the motion from you, the second, Commissioner Cruz. All those in favor of approving proposed ordinance 23 dash zero two zero, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the motion passes unanimously. Okay?
And just for the record, that was as amended.
As amended, yes.
As amended.
Thank you so much. Okay. We're now moving on to unfinished business. The item left here is 10A. Discuss town square investigation scope of work. Who would like to open this item?
I can open it, Mayor. Or was staff going to?
I was, I assume staff had something, but I don't actually know. That was my assumption. Counsel.
I provided a memo to the city commission, which I believe is included in your agenda packet regarding what myself and my firm believe would be an appropriate scope of work based upon prior discussions, the city commission, the agenda item that I was able to review. So, you know, at this point in time, it's, you know, commission's discretion as far as, you know, whether it's any specific direction you want to provide to my firm to, to do that scope of work.
All right, somebody begin. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thanks for providing this. So, you know, I said it before, you know, this is a fact finding analysis to identify what happened here, right? We all know the story. I'm not going to beat a dead horse and discuss how we got here. My, the only thing I want to add is that we do look at negligence and we do look at potential corruption because it could be one or the other and it could be both. You know, I don't want to dig up the past, but I think it's crucial for the city to understand this and I think we owe it to the residents and the taxpayers to understand how we got there. You know, I've said it a couple of times, you know, we have to identify the problems of the past to prevent the mistakes of the future. And so I just want to make sure that we understand that we can, we can review all the documents and everything, but we do need to review if and identify, was this negligent or was this corruption? Or maybe it was both. I don't, I don't know. But that's the only thing I want to add. And I'll wait for, you know, the comments from my colleagues.
All right, thank you for that. I don't care which side goes, Commissioner Kelly.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a resident and a taxpayer and I want to know what happened. So, I mean, I, I mean, I am right there with you. And I talked to David briefly. You know, my only concern is because we have, you know, we had litigation, we have a settlement agreement. I want to make sure, I want David to really look into making sure we, we don't run into any confidentiality issues or disclosure issues that, you know, could bite us. But I, I agree and I support you that we need to, so that we can't fix, can't move forward and move in a positive way without knowing how we got here. So even if we keep it vague, to at least know what we can avoid, you know, to avoid this in the future. So I'll leave my comments there. I support this, what David has proposed as far as, you know, his, the recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay.
I would support it. I just want to know, what is the objective and what is, what is the purpose for this investigation? What are we expecting to get out of it at, at the end of the day?
So I, I'll speak to that and then David, if you don't mind following up. I think anytime you have a catastrophic monetary failure such as the town square project where you have $44 million of public lands that were subsequently sold to a private entity and those public lands belong to every citizen in Boynton Beach, all 83,000. So if you have something of that magnitude, I think it's important that you identify those single points of failure. I think it's important that you not only identify them, but you conduct an after action review, fact finding analysis, and you can avoid those pitfalls in the future because you may have that project of town square, which was 120, 130 million dollars. And I'll give you a perfect example. The decision to go forward with a P3 bond versus going to a general obligation bond, which would have been sent to referendum that the people could have voted on, that removed the decision from the people and it essentially put that debt service on the city. Another thing would be if you have a project of that magnitude, which Snow Seeger, the Boynton Beach Mall is up for sale right now, correct? So that's going to be another project that we're going to have some sort of say so in, even though it's not public land, it's private land, but it's going to be a large project that could have similar ramifications if you entered into a developer agreement, even though it's not public lands, it's, it's of that large magnitude. So if you do, if we have East Point Lily or any other city property, you have to identify what went wrong and how to avoid that in the future. And I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner. You're, you're, you just want to make sure that certain individuals aren't named, there's no blame going forward, but how do we improve the process in the future and how do we avoid those pitfalls? So that's more what this, the scope that staff, and I want to say counsel also is looking at, and you can speak to that as well, David.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, I would look at, you know, in number three and number four of the memo that I provided, you know, we're looking to identify specific events that occurred, which are inconsistent with the project documents and what happened as a result of those actions. And we do review how those events occurred and the impact they had on the original timeline and ultimately the ability of the city to complete the development as originally envisioned. Then we would provide recommendations to the city commission with respect to any best practices related to, you know, the processes that were involved and how to make them better to provide assurances that something like this could not happen again.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is we're looking at the events for the purpose of improvement, not trying to point criminal or nothing like that about individuals.
I, I'm not in a position to conduct a criminal investigation. My goal is to identify acts. Naturally, those acts will involve the individuals who took those acts. So there may be, there may be individuals named, but it's not my job to do any kind of criminal investigation, but merely to focus on processes and procedures that took place that adversely impacted the original vision for this project that resulted in, as Dan said, a catastrophic monetary failure.
So if we can make policies.
Positive changes.
Procedures to prevent that from happening in the future.
Correct.
That's what I want to make clear.
Right. And we'll work with the city manager's office to make sure that we stay focused and, and on, in our lane with respect to performing that scope of work.
I just, I want to say one other thing, Commissioner Hay. In the event that this investigation does uncover any sort of criminal wrongdoing, the city alleviated that specific entity with the litigation that went through with the settlement agreement of civil liability. No one can alleviate someone of criminal liability, not this commission, no one. So if that's uncovered, that's going to have to be left up to a law enforcement agency. A number that large, I'm almost certain it'll probably fall into federal hands, being it involves a municipal government.
Vice Mayor and then Commissioner Cruz.
Go ahead.
I mean, it's already been said, right? We want accountability, we want to uncover whatever happened and understand, make sure we don't make the same mistakes of the past and that's what it's going to take. So this is something that the law firm is going to do solely or are they going to work with any of our city departments to investigate?
Our, our investigation team at my direction, we had already been looking into the actual chiller aspect and I know I shared that with the mayor. So they have already been started, the, and there's quite a bit of legwork that has been done from a preliminary standpoint. So a lot of documents, that's going to be shared with the law firm so they can be working with both entities together.
That's great. Yeah, no, I just, just wondering what the cost of this could potentially be, but, you know, hoping that it's, you know, reasonable. I know it's hourly rates and that sort of thing, but at the same time, it's definitely worth it because we want to understand and make sure that we don't have significant or catastrophic losses, as you mentioned before. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. As many of you know, this is something that I've supported for a very long time and what I said, even from the previous commission, which I guess nobody believed me, was my intention was just so we learn from the mistakes made and as we move and encounter new projects, we know better. I mean, that was always my intention and that's exactly what I said, if you look back into the records, we just need to know so we can learn and develop best practices, right? So that was my goal. So I look forward to seeing this come to fruition. I do have a question and I want to approach this delicately. You know, I want to make sure that this is above board and there is no question, you know, from a future commission, if this was done impartially or partially, right? That's, I want to make sure that this is okay. And so my question to counsel is what mechanisms will be put in place to promote that, right? I want to make sure that this has an air of independence, if not an absolute independence, because I want to make sure that this doesn't become questioned, right? The findings, right? I want to be as, this is, this is really part of the reason why I wanted an independent auditor. So it's, so I think you get my intention, right? Yeah.
I mean, I think, you know, from my perspective, my goal is to have, you know, other attorneys in my firm assist, you know, I'm, I'm not going to be the lead investigator. Certainly can be a conduit for, for contacting or reaching out to the city manager and his staff with respect to exchanging information and not recreating the wheel. But we can assure you that everything we do will be above board. What we provide, the recommendations we provide will be based upon the facts that are uncovered with respect to meetings, documents, correspondence, whatever it might be, conversations with individuals and that the final report recommendations and findings will be impartial and will not be shaded to benefit any party with respect to the actions that were taken.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything else for my colleagues? So we are counsel, I mean, it's clear what the direction is.
Understood.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to legal. 12A proposed ordinance number 23 dash zero two one, the abandonment of 30 wide, what is, sorry, unimproved right of way for the Shalimar project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 23 dash oh two one, an ordinance to the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving the abandonment of the 30 foot wide unimproved right of way established on the Palm Beach Farms Company plat number eight, as recorded in plat five, page 73 of the public records of Palm Beach County, authorizing city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance, the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing effective date. This ordinance before your first reading at this time.
The applicant, you may begin. Please introduce yourselves.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and the rest of the board. David Millage, on behalf of the property owner. We do have a presentation. They can pull it up.
Could you let me know what the title of it is? I don't see like a 10D report or anything.
Should be Shalimar Right Of Way Abandonment PPT. I'll walk us through. So this is. This is a 30 foot remnant right of way that's on the south side of Boynton Beach Boulevard. We're here tonight as this was a, a condition of approval to a prior site plan approval. This was specifically condition number 10, which required the applicant to initiate a vacation and abandonment application regarding this remnant parcel. There, this is unimproved, it's adjacent to our current approved site plan. We've submitted the application, we've gone through P and D, staff is recommending approval. If there's any specific comments, I'd be happy to address the board.
Wait, you said you had a whole presentation, but I only saw.
Yeah, we're kind of waiting.
Each.
I can hand this around if you like. This is from the P and D, but staff wasn't able to upload the presentation.
Yes, do pass that around.
You provided the presentation to staff.
Yes, it was emailed to staff.
Thank you.
Add a little more.
Would you bring the microphone to closer to you?
Jay and Kim with Planning and zoning. So applicant sent the PowerPoint after agenda was published. So we weren't able to attach the presentation on time.
Okay.
Thank you.
In the future, at least make photocopies for us in the future.
If I could, I think the most helpful thing would be if they just put up the map.
Yeah, there's an exhibit B. If IT can put that up.
Yeah, so the, the blue line is the, the city boundary. So this parcel is, I believe approximately 12 acres, the proposed right of way abandonment against 30 feet, it's on the west side of, of the city boundary. It's next to, I guess that's Quail Ridge of Golf Course Community. It's, as staff has stated, there's no utilities within the right of way. It's a, it's a remnant from an old Palm Beach Farms plat. The rest of the right of way has been abandoned throughout the history. And again, as part of a prior site plan approval, the council included condition number 10, which required the applicant to come in and submit an application, initiate this process.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Why wasn't this included when we did the site plan approval of Shalimar?
We, the property owner didn't own it and we came in with plans. I don't know the history of when the city wanted to abandon it, but at some point they down.
I remember Shalimar, like maybe right after I got elected, it was like a month later or something like.
Correct. So I think that in this case, the applicant didn't own the property, they didn't need the property to complete their project, but staff, as a condition, it would left a remnant between two parcels, so they wanted it to be abandoned and added to this parcel so that it could benefit this parcel property and put it on the tax rolls. So that was why it was a condition of approval at the end.
Commissioner, anything else?
I mean, so currently, it's, it's whose property? The city?
City's owns it, responsible to maintain it. As the deputy city manager had mentioned, we already have a VSS site plan, we don't necessarily need it for any purposes, we'll be taking on the burden of maintaining it and the liability relating to it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
No, just, just ask and clarify, so this was approved already by P and D and staff is recommending this, correct?
Staff recommends.
I'm okay to move forward, thanks.
Hey, Commissioner Hay?
I'm good.
Commissioner Cruz? Commissioner Cruz? I'm sorry, Commissioner Kelly, sorry, I am so sorry.
It's okay. I like Commissioner Cruz, we're good. No, I, I'm fine, are you going to, and this is just logistical questions, but, um, are you, do you have plans to add any, so now you have, you'll, you would have a little bit more of a buffer? Would you take advantage of that by adding more landscape and more things to that? Or, so what's your, or what is the, you know, the, the owners?
Well, right now, uh, the plan would be to remove all the exotics and invasive species there, continue to maintain it. Right now, we haven't had an opportunity to actually go out there, review the property. We don't know if there's any environmental hazards, contamination, we don't know what might have happened from next door. So we need to look into that. There's not necessarily an opposition to explore an opportunity, we can further discuss with staff. But right now, it, it would just be simply removing exotics and mowing, maintaining.
Okay, thank you. I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, if there's nothing else from staff or the applicant or my colleagues, yes?
No, I'm just.
That was it, all right, so this is first reading and so, uh, let's have a motion to, uh.
Move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, we have a second. Uh, let's do a roll call since this is first read.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call, vote the motion passing unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for being patient. Item twelve B, proposed resolution number R twenty-three dash one three three. This is the annual registration application fee for wireless communication facility. This corresponds to ordinance number twenty-three dash zero one eight. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, resolution number R twenty-three dash one three three, a resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving a proposed annual registration application and associated fee corresponding to ordinance number twenty-three dash oh one eight regarding wireless communication facilities and providing an effective date. This resolution is before you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Jayon?
Good evening, my name is Jay and Kim with the Planning and Zoning. Good evening, Mayor and, um, Vice Mayor and, um, City Commission. I'm here to present, uh, adapting annual registration format and the fee. Um, as a proposal in ordinance number twenty-three dash zero one eight, um, section thirty and wireless communication facilities is proposing annual registrations and a fee to be established. So the new annual registration application association fees, fees are required for staff to review the wireless communication facility in compliance with the regulations and obtain most of the recent informations of facility within the city. City limits. So followings are, will be the purposes and the functions of this new annual registration applications. It will provide, um, necessary contact information of all wireless communication owners, operators and the service providers. It is also designed for the applicants to prepare and provide a required document and a drawing for staff for review in order to, in, um, compliance with the code requirements. Lastly, um, the provided applications and the documents and drawings by applicants, uh, will be used to establish the annual, um, um, registrations to establish the updated record of the wireless communication facilities. That concludes my questions, uh, that concludes my presentations, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, let's go to public comment.
Thank you for your presentation.
All right, is there anyone who would like to speak specifically on this item? Now is the time to approach the podium. All right, seeing no one approaching the podium, is there anybody online with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Okay, with that, public comments are now closed, we have a motion to approve item twelve B.
Show move.
Come up.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of approving item twelve B, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously, I believe this concludes all of the items for this evening. Would, would you like to make a?
No closing comment?
No adjourn.
No, no comments, no.
We're done, somebody always chimes in and there is public, I mean, there's comments, that's why.
No comments.
Okay. Okay.
Vice Mayor, you can have a comment.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, have a good night, everyone, and thank you.